To order. Let's begin with a roll call.
Certainly, Mr. Bryce.
Present.
This is Jordan Byron.
Present.
Mr. Williams.
Present.
Mr. Patches.
Present.
Mr. Mushak.
Here.
Ms. Langgallis.
Here.
Mr. Kanter.
Here.
And Mr. Shulman.
Here.
Okay.
Okay, with regard to seating of members, we have at least three vacancies this evening. So alternates can fully participate and vote on any, any items that require a vote. If there is anyone here for either the Shorefront Park LLC House or for the 394 West Avenue, those are being removed and will be holding meetings on those at a later date. So we'll begin with the Fire Department. 2023-48 SA, the Norwalk Fire Department, special appropriation request to increase funding for the purchase of two Ford Ranger pickup trucks for the Norwalk Fire Department. And there is someone here representing the department. I'll turn it over to Mr. McCabe.
Yes, good, good evening, everyone. Assistant Chief Ed McCabe from the Fire Department. And this is to cover a cost increase from last fall of 2022 for two Ford Ranger pickup trucks. Those trucks are utilized by our fire inspectors when they go out and do inspections and when they're doing fire investigations. This money is coming from a different Fire Department capital project, which is mobile radio upgrades. Thankfully, not everything's a cost overrun and that project is now coming to a close. And we are able to utilize some of that money to make up the difference for the Rangers. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Questions for Chief McCabe?
Have you explored EV pickup trucks?
We have. At the time, the, the Rangers are not available in EV. And these are placing Ford Escapes, which are from the mid 2000s. So EVs are something that's on our, our radar to investigate moving forward. But this, this order was for, like I said, from the fall of 2022 when those vehicles were not available for purchase in, in electric. And that particular model, I believe, is still not available from Ford.
Yeah, the Ford Ranger is not an EV, but there are other pickup trucks that are EVs at this point, I would imagine, especially for this sort of usage, right? Because it's more everyday usage, not in an emergency sort of use case.
Correct, it's, it's, it's everyday kind of routine usage. These aren't emergency vehicles per se that would be, you know, responding at, at all hours to emergencies. These are kind of daytime vehicles that'll be going out on inspections. And then once in a while will be called out for a fire investigation as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Steve, is this a simple vote to approve the expenditure?
Yeah, I don't know, Brian, did you have a resolution or no?
Yeah, I drafted a quick one.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Hector has made the motion. Is there, and Tammy has seconded.
Thank you.
Any final questions before we vote? All right, if not, we can do this with a show of hands. All those in favor? Any opposed? We have one abstent, one, one no vote. Otherwise, everyone else voted in favor. So it's, it's approved, chief. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
I would like to make a comment to Steve and ask if you could pass it on. I don't know whether it goes to the mayor's office or Director of Operations or where. But we've, we've been through this process a number of times. And each time we have the department head or the assistant department head coming to us on these vehicles. And it seems to me, unless the members of the commission feel differently, that there ought to be a citywide policy on the ordering of vehicles, determination as to which can and maybe should be EVs. But just an overall process where there is one department into which all the other departments feed. So Chief McCabe doesn't have to come before us. Whoever is handling it comes before us, representing the entire city. And in this particular case, the Fire Department. We have never turned one of these requests down. They're all seem to be quite reasonable. It's, it's simply the process that I personally have a problem with. And it should be a citywide process, not an individual department process. So Steve, if I can, ask you to push that message to wherever you think it's appropriate.
Sure, I'll bring it up. I know we're getting into, surprisingly, we're already getting close to budget season. So it might be a good time to at least broach the subject now.
Okay, good. Okay, the next item was to be 26 Shorefront Park. There were some unresolved issues. And so I presume we'll be hearing that at a later date. The next item, item C 2023-43 CAM, Robert Dean Architects, 56 Samus Street. Elevate the existing single-family residence to be flood compliant. Construct a flood compliant addition to the structure and demolish an existing non-conforming accessory structure, which is a detached garage. And who is representing the owner? Mr. Chapman?
Yes, Mr. Shulman, my name is Ron Chapman. And I'll introduce myself and my lovely wife Beth, who's on as well. We are the owners of the home at 56 Samus. And we've just really, let me give you a little bit of background on, on the project and then I'll turn it over to Rob Dean, our architect. Just as a quick side note, I, I spent the better part of 10 years serving on various boards and commissions for, for cities. So I'm very familiar with the time and dedication you folks put into this process. So thank you for your service. As I mentioned, Beth and I just really just absolutely love the neighborhood and the house. So we've decided we're going to own it for a long time. And as a result of that decision, we want to invest in a home in three key ways. Number one, expanding it somewhat to, to fit our needs. Number two, lifting the home to improve storm resiliency and flood safety. And then number three, removing the existing detached garage that really just obstructs the view for everyone around the house, including neighbors on all sides. Just, we, we did consider, but ultimately rejected the idea of just knocking down the house and building a new one. The existing house has a lot of charm and fits with the surrounding homes in the neighborhood. And we very much wanted to preserve that look and feel. So when we set out on this project, my philosophy was seek out and pay for, frankly, expert advice on how to do it right in conformance with all applicable regulations and requirements. And that's exactly what we've done. Beth and I interviewed a number of architects, vetted them, talked to references, et cetera. In, in addition to expertise, we really wanted someone very familiar with Fairfield County in general, and in particular Norwalk and Relaton. And we ultimately decided on Rob Dean as the architect based on his expertise and, and really his vision that fit with what Beth and I were looking to do to the house to, to fit with the surrounding neighborhood. So Rob knows the project inside and out. I'll turn it over to him to walk it, walk you through it and introduce other experts working on the project as well if needed. Rob?
Hi, thank you, Ron. So my name is Robert Dean. I am the principal of Robert Dean Architects in New Canaan, Connecticut. And I'm here with Kate Talbot, who works with me on this project. And we also have Wayne Devanzo from Fairfield County Engineering and Alexandra Moke from, who is a wetland and environmental consultant. We're each going to take a turn telling you about this. Kate is going to handle the graphics. Can we take the screen for sharing a screen? Yes, great, thank you. So. And we're not going to show you the, you know, the nuts and bolts drawings. We're going to tend to show you descriptive things because you've already seen those nuts and bolts stuff in the files submitted. To start, I'll give you a brief overview of the zoning and CAM compliance factors as we've seen them and as we've tried to make them happen. The existing house was constructed in 1926 and has been remodeled several times over the years. It is subject to a zoning variance approved in 1969 for side yard setback and is conforming today for height coverage, building area, et cetera. Also on the site is a pre-existing garage in a, and I will just use. Well, I guess I don't have the ability to annotate, but perhaps Kate could give us, yeah. The pre-existing garage, which is also quite old, has been there for generations in a non-conforming, environmentally sensitive location, which will be demolished if the project is constructed. The proposed conditions continue to be conforming and no new zoning variances are needed. Our CAM application is thus underpinned by proposed architectural conditions that are as of right under the written regulations governing bulk, height, building location, living area, coverage, et cetera. And we are eliminating the one pre-existing non-conforming condition at the garage. After being lifted, the lowest habitable floor elevation will be 18 feet above the mean high water datum. This will be three feet above the FEMA base flood elevation or BFE of 15. The bottom of the lowest habitable floor construction and all mechanical equipment and ductwork will be a minimum of one foot above the BFE. Lifting the house above the BFE is a significant step toward environmental resilience and in minimizing any threats to life and property. And we are lifting the house a foot higher than is typically proposed or required. Impact upon the site is significantly reduced by demolishing that existing garage, which is located close to the seawall, only 2.6 feet away from the coastal jurisdiction line and less than one and a half feet away from the property. If the property, project is approved, elimination of this garage will increase zoning conformity while removing the environmental hazard of automobile storage in close proximity to the coastal jurisdiction line on the water's edge. A new basement garage, and perhaps Kate, you could point that out on the, on the plan. And building entry, but to be located in the main house below the base flood elevation with code complying flood vents that will not impede floodwaters. A new ungrade masonry patio is proposed at an elevation of 7.2 feet above mean high water datum, utilizing the foundation of the demolished garage. The structure will continue to be served by existing underground utilities for water and sewer. And there will be an upgraded overhead service for electrical and internet. Sedimentation and erosion controls complying with applicable standards will be in place during construction. An active stormwater detention system will manage any increased stormwater runoff by means of underground infiltration galleries. There'll be no alteration to pre-activity drainage patterns or increase in the rate of water flow onto adjacent properties. Appropriate flood resistant and salt tolerant native plantings will serve, serve as an environmental buffer at the upwind side of the seawall. Our intent is to meet or exceed the standards set in recent nearby development. In general, and perhaps, okay, we should bring up the next slide. In general, it appears that new development on neighboring sites such as 52 Samus and 86 Bluff Road have been approved at or above zoning maximums with larger environmental impacts and similar disposition of structures on their sites. And I should note that this GIS map shows the pre-existing conditions on all three sites, 52, 56, and 86. So, but you should be familiar with 52 and, and 86. As Ron pointed out, they love this neighborhood and, and three important factors emerged from looking at the neighborhood context. First, the Chapmans have conferred with neighboring owners to assure that the massing and position of the Chapman house will be compatible with other houses in the neighborhood. Maybe we should bring up the, the rendering tape briefly while I mentioned this. Resulting from this, we're currently in the process of lowering the master bedroom roof by roughly one and a half feet to preserve views from the third floor roof terrace of a taller neighboring house under construction at 52 Samus Street. This does not affect our zoning envelope, but it lowers the overall impression and the actual bulk of the Chapman house. We also have received a letter of support from Philip and Aaron Kerr of 86 Bluff Avenue. The Currys are particularly impacted by the existing garage that we plan to demolish. And the two properties function in a closely entwined manner at the water's edge. This letter was received today and I would be happy to read it into the record. We will submit a record copy to the PNC office tomorrow. And so it reads, "To members of the Norwalk Planning and Zoning Commission, we are reaching out in support of the proposed project at 56 Samus Street in Norwalk, Connecticut. We own and have lived for nearly 14 years at 86 Bluff Avenue, which directly adjoins the rear section of the 56 Samus Street property. We have had an opportunity to review the proposed plans and support the proposed redevelopment of the property by Ron and Beth Chapman. In particular, their plans include changes to the existing garage and patio that are very near to the rear of our yard. We hope the commission sees the benefit in the Chapman's proposal and provides the necessary approvals for them to proceed with their proposed project. Thank you very much for your consideration, Philip and Aaron Kerr, owner and resident of 86 Bluff Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut." So we've been looking closely at the neighbors and, and, and trying to make this house continue to fit in, even as the neighbors frankly get bigger. At the front, we are preserving the facade and scale of the Chapman house intact to the maximum extent possible. We're preserving the entire front roof with its low eaves and the existing roof structure as seen from the street. It will be up higher because we're lifting the house, but the existing roof construction is unchanged at the front. Also, we're preserving the mature trees in the front yard at some effort to preserve the appearance of the site and to sustain what appears to us to be a very important neighborhood amenity. Our most important goals related to zoning and CAM can be summed up in four items. First, we are making the house a bit larger within the norms established by zoning and consistent with what we observe on neighboring properties. There are environmental impacts related to this, but we are mitigating these impacts in tried and true fashion by the measures we are taking in design and construction. We are following best practices in environmental and community stewardship by remodeling the existing house rather than tearing it down. This preserves embodied carbon in the existing construction materials and avoids unnecessary excavation and disturbance on the site. This also permits us to preserve the mature existing trees in the front yard, which I previously noted. And I should add to what I noted, the fact that preserving them stabilize is, is now and will continue to stabilize the soils and hydrology of the site. Secondly, although the house is made longer, it is not made wider on its sloping side. The 87-year history of natural drainage patterns will be unchanged, flowing downhill around the house. The contemplated construction will not serve to obstruct either drainage flows or floodwater flows. There'll be a net improvement from demolition of the pre-existing freestanding garage, which also frankly had been in place for generations, but did very clearly impede the natural drainage flows and floodwaters. In a minute or two, well, most, well, the final point would be, frankly and simply, that our application is consistent with the goals and policies of the Coastal Area Management Act. In a minute or two, I'll ask our civil engineering and environmental consultants to discuss some of the key elements of that statement. But first, I'll just report on a few things that have come up for discussion based on comments received in staff review along with our responses. First would be impacts from the pre-existing garage and ungrade terrace. The site contains a significant environmental negative, as I have pointed out, in the pre-existing garage, which was constructed 1.4 feet away from the property line and is in very close proximity to the coastal jurisdiction line. Demolition of the garage removes an intrusive structure from the water views from several houses, including, as the Currys noted. You know, the neighbors appreciate the importance of removing that impediment to their view. It also permits water views looking through the Chapman property to farm creek and brings the project into zoning compliance with no pre-existing non-conforming conditions. This also eliminates the storage of household supplies and many environmental hazards from automobiles from the water's edge. The new garage within the main house, while still in the flood plain, will be roughly a foot higher than the former garage floor, reducing day-to-day flood risk within the garage. We are significantly improving environmental and CAM conditions through demolition of the garage. But we are also mindful of limiting the construction phase impacts of removal work in this sensitive location. Thus, for example, there is an ungrade terrace behind the pre-existing garage, which extends virtually to the seawall. We are preserving most of this terrace to avoid unnecessary excavation and grading at the coastal jurisdiction line and also potential disruption of the seawall. In similar manner, we are preserving the garage foundation and floor to avoid unnecessary excavation and grading and are using it as the base for a paved terrace. While recognizing the runoff impact from the impervious terrace surface, we judge that the avoidance of construction phase impact, including the possible destabilization of the seawall, is perhaps the greater hazard. At the same time, the demolition of the garage itself, as I've noted, represents an important mitigation measure. Another thing that has come up in review is the extent of the driveway. And perhaps Kate could take us to that view. We've kept the driveway at a minimum area needed to serve as access to the site and to the new garage. We've been able to reduce the driveway area slightly from what was originally submitted, but must provide a functional means of servicing the property, both for average-sized family cars as well as larger service vehicles. We've diagrammed on the architectural site plan the necessary maneuvering space for use of the new garage by current production midsize cars. We are providing what's needed and really not more than is needed to do that. If we look at the, the drawing to the right on the page on the screen is perhaps a little confusing. So Kate, perhaps you could highlight the proposed retaining wall that we're showing. So that, that is partly an existing retaining wall. And we are extending it or modifying it to, simply to accommodate the new garage. Now, Kate, if you could highlight the existing retaining walls in a sensitive area of that site. They are much more intrusive into the coastal features of the site. So our goal is to, and this came up in the DEEP comments, which is one of the reasons I'm highlighting here. But we are, we are actually significantly reducing the impact of retaining walls and grading on the site. From the point of view of driveway area, they are very similar. Previous and proposed are very slightly different in shape, but they are very similar in size. So moving on from that, the, I should note in reference to the DEEP comments, that they speculated about whether this could be, this, our retaining wall could be considered a CCMA shoreline flood and erosion control structure. The slight modification to retaining walls that we are proposing will do nothing to alter or direct the pattern of drainage on the site. So I would suggest that it'd be, it'd be very, I cannot imagine any evaluation of that as a as altering or directing the pattern of drainage. There were a few other items raised in staff comments that we have covered in writing. And rather than to go over them in detail in this presentation, I will simply refer you to the written comments. They're well documented and relate to the propane tank, seawall, various materials to be used, elevator equipment, et cetera. We're happy to respond to any questions that anyone may have related to these. So now I would like our civil engineering and environmental consultants to take us to the probably the key pieces of information related to stormwater and environmental conditions. First, I'd like to introduce Wayne Devanzo, a Fairfield County engineer. We'll discuss the stormwater design for new drainage flows. So Wayne, you're on.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, for the record, Wayne Devanzo, Fairfield County Engineering. If, if we could have a little closer up of the, of the site plan, I'd appreciate it. Um i- i- if we could have a little closer up of the uh of the site plan, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Kate. Okay. The uh the drainage solution for for this project uh was to collect, as you can see, the uh portion of the existing house. Roof and addition roof runoff, which is highlighted in green there. And directed to a set of five cultech three thirty chambers in the rear. Uh the bottoms of which would be placed above the mean high water. This uh this system uh provides the water quality volume for for the sites and uh. It reduces the uh. The net volume and the net runoff rate. From the site for the two through one hundred year storms. And we are collecting the runoff uh by the roof leaders and and downspouts. Um connecting to a junction box which will provide uh with the two foot stop, which will basically provide a filter. Uh to filter out any any silts and keep the uh the cultechs clean. And um. That's basically the uh the system. It's very straightforward and simple. Uh if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anybody have questions they'd like to direct to Wayne at this point?
In that case. Well, I have a question.
Okay.
Sure.
Hi, it's JJ.
Hi.
So um the proposed patio where the old garage was. Um how many feet elevated off the ground will that be?
It's at an elevation a little above seven, which is based on the foundation, based simply upon reusing the foundation. It's roughly a foot above the surrounding grade. It's just a step up onto um onto that patio.
And how many feet will it be away from the seawall?
The same distance that it is now, which I believe.
The same footprint.
It's the same exact footprint of the garage. The point, the re- one of the key reasons we are doing exactly that. Is to avoid the excavation work of taking out the garage foundation. Because we see that as more damaging to the site than leaving it in place.
Right. And will there be any privacy screening or fencing or anything of that sort?
Uh there will be done on the um Chapman property, although the neighbors on Bluff Avenue. Are very well screened and as you could see from the comment by the curs. There there's a much greater concern to see the garage disappear than to screen their view. They want to see the view.
Right.
If you know what I'm saying.
I do. All right. Thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, well, I'd like now to introduce Alexander Moke. A credentialed soil and wetland scientist and geologist, hydrogeologist. To report on how we sustain consistency with the goals and policies of the CAM Act. And I believe Alexander has their own PowerPoint.
Um so uh good evening. Uh my name is Alexandra Mauk and I think, Rob, I covered uh this whole project in such details. So I would just zoom on the mitigation um uh portion of this whole project. Um as you know, uh we are adjacent to the tidal marsh and actually uh part of it is located which hand the uh property boundary. Uh this is a highly productive marsh is part of the uh farm creek and farm creek is uh being fed by a stormwater coming from the uplands. And also uh by the tidal um uh influence uh twice a day. Um Spartina, which is dominating the um cover of the vegetative area here, it's very dense. Um and also we have a little bit closer to the uh seawall. It's a high tide bush. Um unfortunately, the as much as the um tidal environment is really rich in life. And so many different species and probably this is the most uh productive environment. In terms of the plant material, we have only few species which can actually survive this very challenging environment. Because we have saltwater, we have freshwater coming from the upland area, we have tides coming up and down. So it is a not very uh easy environment to grow. So we we have only three uh species. But as you can see, they are very tied together and very dense and they provide a really important uh function of uh. Preventing the uh storms and um uh stabilizing the coastline. In addition to the stabilization done by the uh tidal uh marshes, we also have a low uh seawall, which uh is additional protection. And behind it, we have uh some fill. Now, if you look at the area photographs and unfortunately, I don't have a area photograph today for you. But the tidal wetland on the Jason property goes all the way here. Um and the vegetation spreads here, the reason being because the seawall brings our uh portion of our uh property a little bit higher. So it's not really uh supporting our tidal vegetation there. What we're trying to do, we're trying to restore and boost the um environmental values of this marsh. So uh what is being proposed is a planting plan which consists of native um shrapes. And also uh native grasses. Um so those grasses and shrapes, they're going to be enhancing the area. And here we have the species, so we have the uh sweet pepper bush, we have bayberry, we have Indian grass and we have the switchgrass. Um so they're going to be not only creating some sorts of buffer, so transition from the um traditional lawn area. To the uh protected uh tidal wetland, but also they're going to be screening from human activities, from lights, from noise. Uh to allow the coastal habitat to uh function a little bit better. Also, the new shrapes are going to be providing the uh new food source and uh seed source. Uh for the especially coastal birds and a place to hide and uh rest during their uh journey. In addition to the creation of this um tidal buffer, we're going to be uh removing a portion of uh this patio. Which will ease uh some extra space uh for the planting. Uh in order to, in terms of uh different incentives or um mitigation measures. Are smaller ones, which like, for example, in here, we have the access created to the uh back of the house. And as you could see from the architectural um design, this is going to be uh, we're going to have stairs and it's going to be kind of climb up. Uh situation, but even this um concrete structure is going to be enhanced with planters to actually eliminate as much of the impervious surface as possible. And put as many uh plants as as possible. Um and also the removal of the um of the garage is going to be, is up, the area is going to be uh helping with the air circulation. Um uh in the future. Um so I I think the uh the bottom line here is that um not only we're going to receive now. A new buffer, create new buffer, which is going to be uh beneficial for the tidal wetland. But also any stormwater runoff, as Wayne uh mentioned, uh from the new impervious or increase of impervious surface. Will be all collected by the stormwater uh management system, which is going to be here. So uh this is not going to have any impact. So uh the net benefit for the uh tidal marsh is going to be this protected uh buffer area. Um so I'm here if you have any questions.
Uh thank you, Alexandra. And I would reiterate what she just said. We're here for your questions. Maybe Kate, we should put up the uh rendering. Uh could you release the screen, Alexandra? Uh Alex.
Yes.
Oh, could you release the screen?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sharing.
Okay. Uh any questions? Uh to us or to me or to Alexandra or to Wayne or to Ron and Beth Chat?
Okay, no questions?
Oh, Lou, I have a couple of questions, please.
Oh, go ahead, Tammy.
Hi, thank you. Um I guess these are directed to Mr. Dean. Thank you for the presentation. Um. In in doing this lift, do you need to um basically dig out where the new garage is going?
Uh there is excavation behind the house, behind the existing house. Um but. Uh not deep excavation because we. Uh as you can see in the rendering, the garage ends up kind of above the grade. At the driveway. So the exit, so the depth of excavation needed to create that addition is not. Uh overly deep. And the the big benefit is to avoid any excavation at most of the house because. Um on these small lots, taking out a deep excavation is very disruptive to the uh. Site, to the hydrology of the site and um. It's far better not to have to do that.
And did the original house have a cellar or a crawl space? And if either one does that have to be filled in with this lift or is it completely a real lift where it's actually open all the way to the front of this house?
The house is being lifted by about five feet. It does have an existing full basement in the older part of the house. Uh some newer additions have crawl space. Uh in the areas that have existing full basement, we are filling in the basement. To a depth of, I think it's about two feet, ten inches to um. Uh. Bring the grade. It it to bring this the basement elevation into some reasonable relationship to the outside grading. For flood damage prevention purposes and also to grace the foundation. So the short answer is yes, we're filling in the basement. We still end up with full standing height. But we are filling in the bottom of the existing foundation.
Okay, but thank you. And I I commend um you and the Chapmans for basically not tearing the house down. I'm just curious, um when you were thinking about this, did the fifty percent value of the structure? You know what I'm talking about? Did that come into play in your decision? Because I know this house was heavily renovated before, but it was in in a prior FEMA complacency number. So. How did that come in?
Uh we, I don't know if the Chapmans looked into that. Uh by the time they were speaking with us, we were not talking about that. I think the amount of renovation exceeds fifty percent of the of the. Um sunk value. The the this very significant renovation that was done in the house was done in the nineteen nineties. And then a smaller renovation was done about two thousand twelve. So um. But but um for frankly, it was, it's been very hard to find information on the nineteen nineties renovation. So it would be hard to even establish that.
Okay, and just one more question. Um I I appreciate that you're going to move the old garage barn structure at the back of the property. Um but you really feel that leaving the cement pad that it sits on and not digging it out? And perhaps putting like permeable paver patio is truly more environmentally friendly?
Well, here's my, here's what I would say. It's before you get to the question of permeable pages, which is certainly a valid question. The founda- it's not simply a cement pad. There's a full foundation that goes down below frost level for that garage. And there appears to be a foundation also for the terrace behind it. So we we just don't want to enter into the site disturbance of that. Um uh that and we feel that that that. Um. Is a benefit upsetting whatever increased runoff may uh occur from the uh frankly existing. Uh impervious surfaces of those construction of those of that area. Um but um. Right, so you see our logic.
Well, I guess it's uh must be a decent foundation since it's been standing since nineteen twenty seven or whatever it is and with uh withstood many hurricanes and storms.
Well, we have documentation of the presence of that garage dating back to the nineteen thirty four Connecticut aerial survey. And um. Uh. However, the Chapman's only three years ago, there's some very substantial reconstruction up there. So it's kind of a big step for them to take to tear it down. Um but the um. It's just a beneficial ingredient in the project for the Chapmans, for the curs, for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Kate, and you had a question?
Yeah, I uh I have a few. Um thank you for clarifying about the garage. Um can we go back to the the rendering that you had pulled up a second ago? Yeah, so I had a question about the um retention chambers and so I I believe they're uh planned to be buried in the lawn. And on the note of trying to minimize um disturbance to the site, um especially, you know, close to the coastal management area. Um. I'm curious if there is a solution to put those retention chambers where uh the driveway and garage kind of form that L shape with the new proposed retaining wall. Um i- is there either the existing solution? Yep, right there with the cursor. Thank you. Um is there a way the existing solution could be relocated there or maybe a adapted solution could fit in that space in order to? Uh limit how much uh of the property needs to be excavated to to place this.
Um Wayne, do you?
Yeah, yeah, um not not really. Um the problem is, is you can see from the size of it, it's it's very difficult to fit in that area. Um with the stairs and between the stairs and the patio. Uh also, that's an excavator somewhat lower excavated area and we just don't have the vertical depth to. To get the cover that you would need. Sid for what doesn't need to be an H twenty loading for for the vehicular traffic that would be placed on it. So it really isn't a a very viable uh area for the retention.
Okay, even if it's in that green space between, i- is that what you meant or like, yeah, that where it's drawn and red? Thank you. Very helpful.
Yeah, that's that's not large enough and it's.
Okay.
You can't, you can't play, you can't orient it in in that manner. It wouldn't, it wouldn't flow properly.
Okay. Um while on this diagram, um on the uh kind of mirror image side of uh that that space, um is that a patio? Is that an existing patio that's um in that space on the uh right side of this diagram? I don't know which direction it is. I guess it's the east side.
Uh the um. West side, I think. But that that patio is new. Uh and is a simple uh kind of pragmatic surface to put a grill, an outdoor grill.
Um I think that was proposed as bluestone or is that a permeable patio?
This was proposed as bluestone on um stone dust and not on a concrete slab.
Okay, and if I'm not mistaken, is that is that permeable? Sorry, I don't know offhand.
Uh it varies from town to town and um I believe uh it probably is not considered to be permeable. But I'd have to verify that.
Okay, yeah, uh if a permeable solution could be there, that'd be great just with um the additional site coverage and being able to to let more infill go through. Um, uh, I had another question. Sorry to be moment why reorient mine? Nope, I think that was all of them, actually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, are there any other questions? Uh, if there aren't, uh, Mr. Dean, uh, do you want to wrap it up?
Well, I feel that we've given you a good presentation of what we have in mind. We we uh, I feel that we've presented a conforming and desirable project. And I would uh hope that you agree.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to um uh ask Amelia Williams uh to give us a brief review as well.
Sure. So the applicants were very responsive um to initial staff comments and were working to find solutions to some of the issues that were presented um in being consistent with the CAM Act. Deep did send a letter that Brian, I believe forwarded to you the other day, which brought up concerns about that retaining wall, which might be considered a flood erosion control structure, which once um the applicant provides more details, we can confirm with deep. Um, but essentially, if it is determined to be a flood erosion control structure, you would need to come back to the commission to get that approved. But you can work with staff and we could find a solution that's not considered a flood erosion control structure um to get the permit done if you get approved tonight. Um, in general, Deep's letter also referenced um just the general impacts that increase in development, especially increase in impervious surface um would cause. And that's seemingly the two big factors um that Deep had referenced for the commission to make their decision was the increase in living space and the increase in um impervious surface on the property. And if the impact that it will have is minor enough to warrant approval, or if it's a great enough impact that the commission decides it would not um be an approved project. But otherwise, um, things like relocating the propane tank uh closer to the house and further from the coastal jurisdiction line or the um flood or the silt fence, the erosion and sedimentation controls is also brought back further from the coastal jurisdiction line. So in general, um, making the house flood compliant is looked upon favorably, but we do want to consider those other impacts that the work will have.
Uh, Amelia, uh, does the staff have an opinion on uh the increase in the size and whether it um you believe it represents a major change?
Uh, I would say it probably is. It's probably a minor change. That addition on the back, everything's flood compliant. It um is increasing coverage, I think about four or five percent. But it is comparable to similar additions done next door and on abutting properties. So if the commission wanted to stay consistent, I do think that um, the addition itself probably isn't a big deal. I'd be more concerned, similar to what Deep was saying um about the impacts at the back of the house due to things like redoing the driveway or putting in the stormwater management system, just mostly disturbance to the ground in the back. Um, I was similarly concerned about those patios remaining. So it's up to the commission if you do want to add conditions to the resolution to have a permeable, more permeable surface like that patio or have those rear patios where the garage foundation is removed. That is something that we can add. It's not on my draft conditions, but we can add anything like that.
Can you go a little bit more about the thoughts there about like the the uh, sorry, let me try a full sentence here. What you were just saying about the permeable services, especially with the garage and whatnot, like what would you, what are your thoughts there? Do you think it's worth a condition? Do you think it's not that big of a deal to pull out and it actually has a benefit to to doing so?
I mean, it's hard to say. I'm not an engineer. I do not know the details of the foundation, how deep it is or what work would require to remove it. I would be I would be inclined to see some more information as to how leaving that foundation would be more beneficial than removing it and filling it. I think if it is a standard foundation, that could be done relatively easily just by removing that and having just natural vegetation. And I do understand that the homeowners might want a patio back there, but I personally think a solution would be removing the foundation, filling it, and then using a more permeable surface like gravel or something like that.
Amelia, uh, can you pull up the resolution, please?
Sure.
We're gonna need a little bit larger.
Yep, we'll get down to the resolution.
Okay, thank you. That's better.
And it is um standard conditions of complying with the plan submitted, getting sign offs from all of the required departments, soil and um or sediment and erosion controls, and just generally complying with um with zoning standards and with zoning flood and um making sure that the planting plan is in place.
And the reference you had earlier made to deep, is that number nine? No changes? No, that's the C wall.
Yeah, so I wrote the staff memo last week before we received the the letter for the comments from deep, which I think came in on Monday.
Right.
There are, that's why I would suggest, I have um would suggest considering those deep comments. And if you did want to add any conditions based upon the deep letter.
Um.
I, you know, may I interject something?
Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, well, actually, that was Robert Dean.
Oh, I I
I raised my hand, but then Robert spoke. So go ahead. Go ahead, Robert. Um, in reading the DEEP letter, it seemed as if perhaps they were misunderstanding the difference between the existing conditions and the proposed conditions as illustrated on our site plan because they talk about the retaining wall approaching the um coastal jurisdiction line, which the existing retaining wall does, but the new retaining wall does not. So I um I I I would just insert that comment because I think perhaps the reviewer uh was it might have been having trouble distinguishing between the two.
Well, while you may be right, I don't think that we can make that assumption. Um, and so I think we do need um uh language uh in in here uh that would uh bring this back to us. Should there be an issue with deep? If there's no issue with deep, um, and if you're 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 correct about your interpretation, uh, then this immediately can move forward. Uh, but if there is um an issue and needs to come back to us, um, we need to have language in here that
Understood.
makes that possible.
I understood. I just wanted to get that comment on the record.
You you're referring to the retaining wall issue specifically, correct?
Uh, the DEEP report references a retaining wall that extends east along the east side of the house and extends toward the water.
Understood. My question was for Mr. Schulman to clarify that he's referring to the retaining wall issue specifically, correct?
Actually, what I'm referring to is the deep, uh, the deep letter which we had.
Correct. The retaining wall issue in the deep letter, correct?
Uh, frankly, the entire deep letter.
Okay, because deep has raised similar concerns about every other project in the neighborhood and those have been approved. The retaining wall issue is a bit unique and I understand the need to come back to this commission if in fact there is an issue there and we can work with staff to work, work on our on a solution to that. And I'm more than willing to do that. Um, but but to just broadly adopt the deep letter in its entirety when those same concerns have frankly been rejected on other applications seems inconsistent.
Okay, Amelia, uh, would you agree that uh it's um simply the retaining wall that um uh is the issue we should be concerned with?
Um, not necessarily. And I think in the deep letter, the reason for adding that comment was because there was a specific permit needed if that wall were to extend further towards the C wall. So I don't think they were interpreting it as that was what was proposed. I think they took this opportunity to let the homeowner or let the applicant know that if they were to extend that wall, they would need a deep permit kind of getting, being a little bit proactive about it. Um, I do think Commissioner Schulman, what you were saying about having that language is uh condition thirteen is a little bit long, but it's basically saying that this permit doesn't supersede any other permit. So if deep requires something, you still have to comply with deep requirements. So hopefully that's a a middle ground. I think that's condition would cover kind of what you were talking about and does reference um or it would make sense with that deep comment about the retaining wall. So this is basically saying we're not approving anything that's not on the plan. So if you were to extend that wall, even if it's not a zoning issue, this permit still supports the deep requirement or the deep regulations.
All right, uh, then I would ask uh that um you find some language to add here, uh, probably as a number fourteen um that would address that. Um.
Address what specifically?
Um, uh, the uh the questions that you just raised.
I think I would say that condition number thirteen is
Does that?
But yeah, it's just saying that this permit doesn't supersede any other permit. So it even cites deep, the Connecticut Department of um Environmental Protection. Just saying that you need to be in compliance with deep too.
All right, I'm I'm sorry, I'm rereading that.
It's it's a long one. It's okay.
I I have a comment, Mike, here.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, so deep does a good job of enforcing the CAM law, I think nineteen eighty two, whenever nineteen eighty one. Uh, but it was written so long ago that it doesn't consider resiliency. I brought this subject up before. And um, but they, you know, they need to put into writing uh their objection to increasing living space, for instance, uh, it's almost boilerplate language. We do see it on every application. Um, and you know, it's legitimate concern, but uh resiliency is the you know, is a sort of more up to date uh concept that deals with the fact that uh the the property will be uh able to recover from a flood incident or a storm surge uh compared to what is existing. And um and that resiliency is to me very important. And I don't want to bring up it. And so I don't, I'm not concerned with the deep language in the letter that talks about, you know, the increased living space uh in in this uh zone. Uh, because the entire property is going to be much more flood resilient. Uh, I want to mention that the um the foundation of the garage, uh, there was a concept brought up in our um uh our meeting that we had uh at the same time as the public hearing. Do you remember the uh where we're talking about energy efficiency? Uh, and uh, one of the uh consultants that was there talked about embedded carbon. And, you know, to pull the foundation out is going to take a huge amount, I mean, not huge, but certainly uh a lot of energy to pull it out, then take it to a landfill uh or possibly grind it up, you know, at you know, which Turzian does on Bouton Street, you know, they they chop up concrete and um or maybe that's Rondano, you know, whatever. There's people that do that. But in any case, leaving it in the ground to me is a more environmentally sensitive uh approach than to pull it out and then put something else in uh in its place. Uh, and I suspect in nineteen twenties, when that was built, the concrete, from my experience, the concrete is going to be very deep and it's going to be uh uh it's quite extensive because uh people built things to last back then. Uh, and so I would, I would, uh, I'm not concerned about uh the uh imperviousness of the patio on the foundation. I think that's actually a brilliant solution uh for that particular spot. The other patio that uh that Chapin brought up asked about, you know, for the grill on the side of the house, that could easily be made pervious with just larger joints with gravel in between. It's a nice look. Uh, and that's how you make it pervious. That's what pervious paving is. It has larger joints that, uh, you know, you can do it, you can make a brick patio pervious by just having one inch joints with a fine gravel that lets the water through. So a a bluestone patio on stone dust is uh slightly pervious because the water, some water does get into the joints. Depends on the width of the joints, but um I would say let's just, let's just ask for that to be uh pervious with wider joints. I think that's a good catch and a good call. But I would say overall, uh, I uh I my only suggestion would be uh if when the excavation occurs for the garage, that they keep an eye out for Native American artifacts because this was a major uh oystering and fishing ground for Native Americans. So it's a very rich all of Norwalk is actually a very rich site. But um I don't think that's a condition we need to put in. It's just a comment. Uh, but I think that this uh project uh uh certainly fulfills uh all of the things. And I I do know the full disclosure here, I do know the firm, I know Robert Dean Architects and the team. And I think they're, you know, they couldn't be in better hands in terms of making sure this project uh goes very well. So that those are my comments.
Well, Mike, take it a step further and give us the uh language for turning um uh that porch into a pervious surface.
Sure, the uh east or was that the west? We were upside down.
We're upside down west.
Yes, the west patio. Uh, I'm glad you put the E and W on that drawing. That was quick thinking. Uh, uh, adjacent to the house, uh, shall be uh pervious, shall be built to pervious standards.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. And Mike, at the same time, uh, are you moving to approve this?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Is there a second? I'll need someone to speak. Okay, thank you, Hector. Hector uh has seconded. Uh, any final questions before we go to a vote? Okay, if there are none, uh, let's do a roll call on this.
Commissioner Jordan Byron.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Pachas.
Yes.
Commissioner Kanter.
Yes.
Commissioner, Chair Schulman.
Yes.
Commissioner Brace.
Yes.
Commissioner Muschak.
Yes, and I have one comment while I'm voting uh that also keeping the existing house is also fits into that embedded carbon formula that we were told about, you know, in terms of replacing the house with a new house and all of those environmental costs. This is actually the most environmentally sensitive thing to do is to just raise the house, existing house built in nineteen twenty nine with all that embedded carbon in all of that wood and plaster and everything else that's in that house. All of that uh counts for a lot. Anyway, that's a yes.
And Commissioner Langgallis.
Yes.
Okay, it's approved unanimously. Thank you.
Did you, Darius? Did he get a chance to vote?
I voted right after you.
Thank you. Don't want to leave anybody out.
All right.
Much.
Okay. Uh, moving on uh on the agenda. Um, excuse me. Uh, the next item, uh Wegman's Food Market, forty seven Richards Avenue and six seventy seven, uh, six seventy seven, six seventy six and six fifty one Connecticut Avenue. Um, sorry, I'm reading from my phone, uh, small letters. Um, uh, extension of time request for previously approved Wegman's Grocery Store parking structure and two additional retail buildings. Um, Attorney Klein, you're representing Wegman's?
Yes, thanks so much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the record, Jay Klein of uh Carmenti Law here on behalf of Wegman's Food Market. Uh, I'm joined by uh Steve Leedy, who is in the southwest corner of my screen. Uh, you all might remember Steve from last summer. He's the project manager for Wegman's. Uh, also joined by, I I don't think you've met Dan Chapel yet. Uh, Dan joined our firm a little bit after the Wegman's was approved. Uh, he's done a great job and I know he's looking forward to working with all of you, not just on this project, but uh on on many other projects. So happy to have Dan on on our team here uh as well. Um, I think the extension request is, you know, fairly straightforward. Uh, we have made a lot of good progress. Uh, we just may not have a building permit, you know, within the one year time limit imposed by the regulations. Uh, we have filed uh for a building permit for the garage structure. Uh, we did, you know, successfully uh uh begin the demolition process, notify neighbors, we've got abatement of the MBI. We've got abatement of the MBI structure to be demolished and uh, uh, engaged with DOT on all the Route One work that uh, that you all approved last year. Uh, uh, and the goal remains opening in twenty twenty-five. Uh, we just need the extension uh, uh, to buy some time to to get our building permits secured and vest the zoning approval and uh, get building.
You're asking for a one-year extension?
Correct.
Typical?
Typical, yeah, yeah.
Uh, any questions for Attorney Klein? All right, uh, if not, uh, can I have a motion to approve one-year extension? Uh, Mr. Patches has uh, moved and Mr. Williams has seconded. Uh, any questions? All right, if there are none, then uh, we can do this, I think, with a show of hands, all those in favor? Uh, looks like it's unanimous.
I think we got one extra too, do we get, do we get another year for that or?
No, sorry. We hope not to see you back on this issue again.
Yeah.
Both for, both, both for you and for us.
Agreed.
Second item, uh, um, twenty twenty-three dash forty-one R slash S P, Wegmans Food Markets, Inc., forty-seven Richards Avenue and six seventy-seven, uh, six sixty-seven and six fifty-one Connecticut Avenue. Uh, zoning regulation text amendment to allow for additional signage in the business number one zone and special permit uh, application for signage for Wegmans. This is a preliminary uh, uh, review. And uh, again, uh, back to Attorney Klein.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, uh, and seeing Commissioner, Commissioner Patches' colleague there reminded me that it is bedtime in my house, so if you all can't hear me, just let me know and I'll speak a little louder, I'm I'm trying not to upset the the folks upstairs. So just, just let me know if you can't hear me. Um, so uh, uh, again, uh, Jay Klein here on behalf of Wegmans with Mr. Leedy and uh, and my colleague Dan. Uh, we do have a brief PowerPoint recent presentation that I think helps illustrate uh, what we're, what we're discussing here this evening. And again, a preliminary review of the proposed uh, uh, signage. Uh, Dan, why don't you go ahead to the color site plan, the next slide, please? Um, as you all, you know, remember, it's essentially Norwalk and Wegmans one-year anniversary this month. Um, uh, when Wegmans first contemplated coming to Norwalk, uh, the first property that they were really focused on was forty-seven Richards Avenue. It's that parcel, as you all know, where the grocery store and the parking structure uh, uh, are uh, approved and and will be located. As Wegmans, you know, further studied the site, it became apparent to them that uh, uh, not just the grocery store, but the traffic experience for all the surrounding roadways would be benefited uh, uh, if they could achieve access points to Connecticut Avenue. Um, Steve, uh, myself, uh, you know, our, our Bill Hennessy, countless others, we spent a lot of time before even bringing applications to you all last summer, trying to get that access out to Connecticut Avenue. Uh, and we weren't able to achieve not just one, but two uh, curb cuts getting out to Connecticut Ave uh, and purchasing six seven seven Connecticut Avenue, uh, where the uh, urgent care facility is today, and then the Mr. Shower Door parcel uh, at six fifty-one Connecticut Avenue. Um, uh, which not only has a curb cut, but is has a, has a signalized access point to Connecticut Avenue, which is, which is helpful as well. The value here uh, was really to make sure that, you know, traffic flow was optimized for folks coming to or passing by the grocery store, having four points, uh, four ways to get in, four ways to get out. Make sure that there's no individual roadway, uh, that's, you know, experiencing a adverse impacts that are that aren't necessary. It helps to equalize conditions, I suppose. Um, of course, uh, uh, what is interesting about this site is that forty-seven Richards Avenue is uh, uh, essentially not visible from Connecticut Avenue, right? Uh, so in order to activate the curb cuts that lead to the grocery store on Connecticut Avenue, to activate all the curb cuts, we need to make sure they have appropriate uh, uh, signage. Uh, and of course, we want signage that is in keeping with the buildings that uh, uh, were approved just one year ago. So uh, uh, what we're seeking as uh, the Mr. Chairman mentioned uh, earlier is uh, a text change to permit the signage that we'll show you, and then also a special permit uh, to actually get the signage uh, uh, approved. So Dan, why don't we start with the grocery store building uh, signage? I think that's the next slide we have here. Uh, the primary challenge of getting signs on the grocery store under today's regulations are really twofold. Uh, the regs, uh, as they're written, don't contemplate a building that's um, uh, sighted in the way this building is, not just set back, I think, over three hundred feet from Keeler Avenue. Um, but also, you know, behind the buildings that are on uh, Connecticut Avenue. So uh, we want to make sure uh, that we have visible uh, uh, signage on the storefront and also signage that quite frankly is uh, to scale with the building uh, uh, that was approved. And that's what uh, uh, our applications really achieve here uh, uh, today. Um, the signage on the Easterly facade, which is on the top of uh, Dan's PowerPoint here, I believe the the main Wegmans sign is four hundred forty-five square feet, and then there's a cafe sign. Those, of course, direct customers to the primary entrances to the grocery store. Uh, and, you know, to kind of state it plainly, are more in scale with improved building than the signage that you could achieve uh, uh, today. We think, you know, we want the signs to look attractive, we want the building to look as attractive as it is on these, on uh, on the approved plans and these sign, these signs help make that happen. Uh, the other sign on the grocery store building uh, is on the uh, south side, the side facing I ninety-five. Uh, and we have, uh, I believe it's just over one square foot of sign area, per linear foot of facade that faces I ninety-five. Uh, uh, so a pretty, pretty uh, appropriate sign for for that facade, I would say. Dan, why don't you go to the next uh, next slide here? Uh, this is a rendering uh, depicting the grocery store. Again, you can see, uh, this does a good job of illustrating how far set back the grocery store building is, uh, but also how far set back the parking structure is, two hundred forty feet, I believe, off of Keeler Avenue. Um, and the current uh, uh, signage standards, again, don't really contemplate uh, 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 a use where there's a building and a parking structure uh, uh, that are set back uh, this distance. Uh, so Wegmans does propose, uh, and and our applications would permit um, you know, signage on the parking structures uh, themselves. I think uh, the first sign which you can see here, this is facing out towards Keeler Avenue, uh, directing folks turning in from Keeler Avenue that, hey, this is a place to park if you want to come uh, get some great food or need some good groceries. Uh, uh, just over one hundred square feet, and then there's a similar sign. Dan, why don't you go to the next uh, slide, please? I'm trying to find the northern elevation, which I believe is uh, the third facade or 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 second from the bottom. Uh, that's a sign that folks who are entering the property from six seven seven Connecticut Avenue will see as they drive down six seven sevens access drive and into um, what what we know as the MBI property uh, uh, today. So that's our our parking garage signage. Dan, why don't we go ahead to uh, the other buildings? Uh, of course, you know, there were two outbuildings that were approved as part of our uh, application last year. We don't have uh, tenants identified for these yet, but we know that there'll be two tenants at six seven, or we contemplate two tenants at six seven seven Connecticut Avenue uh, and one tenant at the Mr. Shower Door parcel at six fifty-one uh, Connecticut Avenue. Uh, a total of uh, eighty-two square feet of wall signage is proposed at the six seven seven building. Uh, and a total of, I believe it's seventy-six point five square feet is proposed for the six fifty-one uh, building. Uh, again, the importance of these signs, not just having proper signage on the front of the buildings, but also signage uh, in front of the parking areas that are closest to both of these buildings, having signs at the storefront do a nice job of telling people, hey, this is the, this is the doorway that you want to come into. Uh, uh, rather than having folks just walking around the parking lot, uh, uh, not sure which way they should, should be going. Um, Dan, why don't we go ahead to the next, the next slide here? Uh, so this is an aerial, uh, you know, the current site conditions, but I think it does a good job of illustrating what I started this presentation talking about, uh, just a few minutes ago. Um, the fa, the the benefit of of having multiple uh, points of access and also the need for signs uh, that appropriately notify folks uh, that, hey, these are the ways that you can get to not just the grocery store at the MBI parcel, but you'll see the Mr. Shower Door parcel uh, um, is a flag lot, it's a rear lot, which means the building on that property is not visible from folks traveling along Connecticut Avenue. Uh, so it's important that folks see signs directing them to get to uh, the building uh, uh, that is there uh, as well. We are also proposing ground signs at the Keeler Avenue and Richards Avenue access points. Um, both of those will be uh, or all four of those, I should say, excuse me, there's two on Keeler, two that we're proposing on Richards. Uh, uh, Keeler's on the east side and Richards is of, is of course on the west side. Uh, those are both six feet uh, tall, uh, so a little shorter than, I guess, a Steve Kleppen, I I I would say, uh, and approximately nineteen square feet in in total area. Um, those are designed really to capture uh, folks traveling north and south along uh, both Keeler Avenue and Richards Avenue. Uh, Dan, why don't we proceed on to the next slide? Let's go to the next one too. The ground signs that I just mentioned, that'll be on Keeler and Richards, and Dan, if you could circle them with your mouse, that'd be helpful, are on the far right side of um, of Dan's slide here, those six-foot-tall signs. And then we also have our ground signs that we're proposing for uh, Connecticut Avenue. Again, these signs are uh, uh, really uh, serve a critical wayfinding purpose that your typical ground sign uh, doesn't really have to do, you know, for most uh, uh, uses, the building is either right on the property line or close to it, that's not the case uh, for the Wegmans, and it's not the case uh, uh, for the building at six fifty-one Connecticut Avenue. Uh, so uh, these aren't the superfluous advertising, they're uh, really addressing an important uh, public health and safety issue when it comes to to wayfinding and appropriately dir- directing uh, uh, traffic. Uh, and and I think it's also worth uh, pointing out, in fact, you folks, at least on my screen, I can see almost side by side what we're proposing and what is on uh, Connecticut Avenue today, uh, in the right corner of Dan's screen. Um, you know, these are your typical pole signs, right, that are there uh, uh, today. Um, uh, you see on the far left, what's that, six fifty-one Connecticut Avenue? And you see the 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 Bollmore. Dan, let's go back to the signs that Wegmans is proposing. You know, these aren't your typical pole signs that you see, you know, uh, uh, over on some of the places out in uh, Darien and things like that. These are, these are well-appointed signs uh, that have brick elements to match uh, the grocery store that we uh, that we worked on and are continuing to work on uh, uh, into the future. Uh, so these are really thoughtfully designed and, you know, Wegmans, uh, quite frankly, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't have it any other way, they want this to be really premier in every, in every facet of the project. Um, so Dan, we can move on to, we have another example of the sign at six seven seven Connecticut Avenue. Again, a comparison of, you know, the signs that I think maybe most folks aren't excited about, the type of sign that you could just get a building permit for and, you know, not have to show up to a public hearing or something like that. Uh, we think we can deliver something that's several steps up from, from what we see out there today, and and we think we've achieved that with the ground signs proposed. Um, I'll, I'll end my remarks, because I know this is a preview and uh, uh, we're losing the sunlight here. Um, you know, the text change is a component of the project and um, uh, uh, we've had some conversations with both Steve and Brian, and we're open to, you know, we have no pride in authorship. If folks have uh, other ideas about verbiage or or how to uh, 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 broaden or or narrow the scope of certain ideas, we're happy to work with Steve and Brian uh, on that. Uh, what we think is important is delivering, you know, the project that uh, that we all want to see uh, uh, in twenty twenty-five or sooner. So, uh, with that, I'm happy to uh, stop, you know, uh, and and take any questions or comments that, that you folks have here this evening for us.
Uh, well, I think I'd first like to call on staff. Um, Brian, maybe you can address the technical issues here.
Sure, so um, yeah, we had a lot of back and forth, uh, myself and and Jay, kind of, when he submitted the the text amendment application even before, as he was kind of coming up with some language. Um, and it is difficult to come up with texts that kind of gets Wegmans sort of what they're looking for, as well as kind of um, protects the city and kind of gets the city to look along uh, Route One that they're kind of striving for in the future. Um, uh, my first read of it is the, the wall signage itself isn't necessarily problematic. The wall signage, you know, given the scale and size of the building, um, it would look a little silly to have such a small sign um, located on that structure. Um, it's sort of the, the ground signs that I had kind of a, an issue with when I was reading. Um, just the, the, the number of ground signs, uh, you know, two at each entrance and exit um, seems to be a lot. Uh, you know, I I would think that, you know, one ground sign at each could be sufficient, um, as part of a, some sort of text amendment like that. And then also, you know, under the new regs, and I know we're, we're operating under existing regs, but we're kind of looking at what the city's supposed to look like going forward. Um, we're kind of moving away from those large pole signs that you see along Route One. Um, I think kind of the, the look isn't really what, um, you know, you don't see those signs in Darien, you don't see those signs in Westport. Um, so we're kind of of the mind of why should we allow them in Norwalk? So kind of when you get those fifteen-foot-high pole signs out at the street, it's not really kind of the, you know, the aesthetic that we're kind of going for as, as Route One develops going forward. Um, so you know, if you took those ground signs that are proposed on Keeler or Richards and you put that up on, you know, Route One, I think uh, we'd have, you know, much more favorable opinion on that.
Steve, any follow-up?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think in my mind, I I'm not a big, I I mean, the, the, the text itself, I'm happy to, you know, Brian and I and Jake can chat offline about that, just, I, I don't see the language being something that would translate into the new regs. I think it's kind of a little bit tortured in in what, what it tries to achieve. Um, I, I mean, I, I, I agree with Brian on the wall signs, I, I think, you know, there's nothing out of scale with what's proposed. I think having two, two uh, ground sides, each location seems a bit much, especially when the two side streets were not necessarily always intended, especially the uh, Richards one was not intended as a main access point, was really just, you know, I know lots, that's where the trucks come in, that's where the, you know, with the feeder point for the servicing the site was. Um, I, I think, to me, I'm thinking, you know, I, I, I back up what Brian says, I think, for, if the goal long term is to change the aesthetic along Route One, we, you know, we have to keep that in mind about whatever we're approving at this point.
Well, with, with, with strong objection from the staff, I'm wondering why um, we're seeing this text amendment, why there hasn't been further conversation um, between um, uh, staff and um, Attorney Klein regarding this issue.
We've been, I mean, I mean, I think, and Brian's been born, you know, the main point of contact, but we've been working with them all along. Um, you know, again, Brian and I are the decision makers in this uh, issue, so I think they need to get, you know, a sense from the commission on what, what you guys are thinking in terms of what you feel is appropriate, not appropriate, and what, what you'd like to see. And then if we can get consensus on that, at least then, you know, whatever details we need to iron out, we can do that prior to scheduling the actual public hearing.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I have um, I have an opinion about this, um, as you can imagine, um. Can you bring up the site plan that shows the Keeler and Richards uh, uh, entrance ways? If that's not too much trouble?
Yeah, Mike, upload, give me one second.
Sure.
Dan's got it.
Oh, good, uh, maybe blow it up, so maybe, let's just pick one, uh, let's, you know, maybe Richards on the left. And just, just really blow it up, uh, yeah, and then can you move the whole plan? I don't need to see the whole plan, uh, just the, just that, yeah, perfect. Because I wanted to bring up something uh, that I thought was important here. Um, uh, so the, I have, I agree with staff that one sign is sufficient here and there's two, and it has to do with public safety. If you had two signs with arrows going in, someone could easily interpret that as two If you had two signs with arrows going in, someone could easily interpret that as two entrance lanes. And suddenly fly in, now, of course, for somebody like me who knows that's a two-way road, that's not going to be an issue. But there might be some uh new folks who are just arriving. And the idea of having all two signs with two arrows, I think it could easily be interpreted as you can, that's two entry lanes. So I would remove the sign on the, let's say, on the upper, on the uh on the exit lane. Just not have that there. And you're gonna have a two-sided sign that could be visible from both sides. You know, on on the uh on the entry lane. And I think that'll be sufficient. Uh it's less signage on what quickly turns into a residential street. Uh obviously, you know, from that point north on this plan, you know, let's say, looking uh up the up the drawing towards the top of the page. It certainly turns commercial very quickly. But as soon as you go under the ninety-five bridge, uh you're in, you know, something that looks kind of idyllic. I mean, it's, you know, it's um Brookside, used to be called the, you know, Flax Hill neighborhood. Anyway, that uh it's not quite Rowayton yet, but uh that that net, those, both those roads are are quite pretty. Uh I don't want to say country, but they are, they feel very country. And then suddenly you're gonna have two signs that announce Wegmans. I think one sign is enough there, and so I agree with staff there. And but the other thing is uh visibility. I realize our roadway standards are a little bit ambiguous on uh having uh on visibility. But certainly, if you can imagine, maybe you can blow that up a little bit more, Brian, if that's not too much trouble. I just want people to imagine a car pulling up to that stop bar. That's the perpendicular line that is right below the red dash. Uh I'm using my arrow, my cursor, as if everybody could see it, which is silly. Uh but anyway, yeah, thank you, that. So i- if you, and a lot of people are gonna break the rules, obviously, you know, people that are behind the wheel are not all gonna stop at the stop bar. But if you did, follow the rules and you stopped your front of your car at that stop bar, you're basically about eight feet, six to eight feet back if you're in a typical car because you're behind the wheel and you've got your engine in front of you and your, you know, your hood. And suddenly you're looking at a six-foot sign instead of looking up the street. And our standards require four hundred and thirty-two feet on a uh minor arterial uh which is kind of overkill, that's the engineers uh on steroids, I think. Uh we don't, you know, I've had this discussion with our engineers at our DPW many times about this because, you know, they they would prefer not to even have street trees uh sometimes uh to uh maintain that very long sightline. And that's a safety uh issue. But you know, the the roadway guidelines that we have are just that, they're uh or the roadway standards are guidelines. It says so right in the text. And and uh and anyway, I'm sort of going around this subject. Uh basically, that sign's gonna block your view. And uh if you're sitting there properly at that stop bar, you're gonna be looking at it. Even though our roadway standards say you only need to be, you only need to be concerned about obstructions ten feet back from the roadway. Uh the fact that there's a sidewalk there, and I think our standards predate uh even the common use of sidewalks, probably. I mean, God, they probably go back to nineteen ten. Um but that that's another issue, is that there's a safety issue with having the sign there blocking your view. It's not a concern on the other side because you're not sitting there exiting on that side. And you can see past the sign uh to uh cars coming. So I I I'm making an argument for just having one sign on the entry lane only on both sides. And I think the six-foot sign is appropriate uh for there. And uh I have no problem with the building signs at all. And actually, I'm gonna probably uh go against uh what the common thinking is, uh maybe uh certainly with staff comments. I like the big signs on Route One because we have extra buildings that they're gonna extra sign, extra uh businesses that they're gonna be advertising. And my pet peeve is the towns that have these small signs, you can miss them. Uh and when you're driving on Route One or Connecticut Avenue, it's really important to be able to see where you're going and identify where you're going. I don't have a problem at all with the freestanding sign design uh that Wegmans is proposing, and I think they're appropriate. And I think the fact that uh this is a unique property with a unique um situation with the main tenant way back from the road. It's not like you could just look over and see, let's say, across the street, you can see that there's a Walmart there, soon to be Target. Um uh and it's a big hulking building. Uh and you don't may not need the sign as much, but here you do need it. And I think we ought to take that into account. Uh we certainly want people, we don't want people to miss the turn and cause a conflict point on uh what is a very busy road and try to turn around and fi- you know, figure out what to do uh and get confused. I think the bigger sign is certainly fine. I don't think we need to worry too much about the aesthetics at this point. They're gonna put a lot of street trees in. And uh the building is very attractive, and I think the sign is attractive. So that's my opinion. I I so I agree halfway with staff, but I have no problem with a larger sign because anything smaller is gonna be, is gonna get lost and is gonna create uh to me confusion. Uh especially because you have to advertise extra businesses on those signs as the rendering shows. And it wouldn't be fair, it wouldn't be fair to the other tenants to have this tiny little, you know, Wegmans is gonna be the prominent uh uh sign on the on those freestanding signs. But then what does, if we reduce the size of that, what does that leave the tenants uh on on those other buildings? It leaves them with a tiny little spot that is is gonna be missed. Uh and I don't think that's fair. Uh I want to uh encourage business, uh certainly. And I want to encourage, uh and I think it's a safety factor to have actually a larger sign there. That's all I have to say.
Uh I see there are two issues here. One is uh the number of signs, the second one being um some of the sizing. Um I I I certainly agree with staff and with Mike. Uh we don't need double signs. Um I think it's um overkill. And um I do agree with this, uh the larger signs on the buildings, uh the sign facing I I ninety-five, uh tho- those large signs, I I don't really have a problem with. Um but I think that uh the staff and um uh Wegmans need to go back to the drawing boards uh on uh the size and design of uh the street level uh signs. Uh so that we have a product that's more in keeping with what we think will be appropriate mo- going going forward. Other comments? Uh go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you, Lou, uh Mr. Klein, thank you. I very briefly will say I agree with one sign each on the side streets, Keeler and Richards. I don't, I I'm a little concerned about people pulling in and out of Costco and Wegmans at the same time because that's kind of an amazing uh fly-in, fly-out the back gate, if you will. There's no sign for Costco and people certainly know where it is. Um and the building is much closer to the street, so I appreciate that you need to advertise your establishment. Um and I'm okay with two signs on Connecticut Avenue. Uh my question, I guess, is how are these signs illuminated? Are they, is the Wegmans lit up or is there a light shining on the Wegmans word?
I think Steve Levy is the best one.
Yeah, so, yeah, Steve Levy, Wegmans Food Market, it's good to see other folks again. And they they were not ever light shining on, there would be backlit signs.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. I I I could also, uh Chairman Schillman, maybe uh provide a little uh background on how we got to where we're at here. Um the signs, the the two, the two signs that are on Keeler and Richards were strictly put there to work with uh the traffic uh part of this project. When we were directed, working through with uh City of Norwalk staff and Jim Travers and and his gang there, uh there was a mention of providing wayfinding at those two entrance points in 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 our uh conversation with them. So that's why those signs are there. So we thought we were doing a good thing by putting the two signs there. If every, and it sounds like the majority wants one sign, we're absolutely fine with one sign at Richards, one sign at Keeler. I think it is important to have them there so that there is guidance for our customers coming in and out in those areas.
Are we or were we incorrect in uh assuming that Richards was a a service entrance?
Uh Ri- Richards is a full full access.
Oh, it is full access, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh other other uh questions or comments?
Uh I would just
Hi Darren.
I agree, one sign on Connecticut Avenue uh should serve sufficient. I think, you know, uh ground signs are a bit hard, you know, there's only but so much design you can really do with it. Um but I do agree with the consensus of the group and um the president, if uh Steve or um Brian would like to speak to the president, we may be setting with this. I I don't know, because you both did mention um, you know, going forward, how we would like to see Connecticut Avenue, so.
Um so I have a question about signage. Um so will the sign, wh- wh- will the marquee be facing both ways um for northbound traffic and southbound traffic as they approach? Will it be a double sided?
Yes, 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 it would be, yeah.
Yes, and is there any proposed foliage or or bushes around that that may impede, you know, the visual from the road?
Uh, not sure, I'm following you exactly there, but you can look at the sign design and see that we have raised the sign up off of the ground. So that there's better
So there's nothing obstructing it from, if if a if our car is approaching from northbound or the southbound, they will be able to see it um before getting to the um the roadway into the supermarket, the grocery store.
Yes.
Because there's a, there's a lot of businesses along the way. And since this is a, this is a new establishment, you know, you want to give people enough time to prepare to make that turn.
And and that's the sign B, correct, that you're speaking about? That you're referring to? With the open?
So so the the open part i- is at the signalized intersection or the Walmart and Wells Fargo intersection? That's where that sign is.
Yes, and were you planning on having exposed concrete here or having some type of facade or? Uh were were we to go with that?
There there's no exposed, there would be no exposed concrete. It would be uh brick or a mixture of brick and stone, if everybody preferred of some sort. And then, you know, we would also landscape the area.
So you you can, that'll be, you'll see through that, right below the second tenant there, uh Commissioner Williams.
Yeah.
It's not just a a wall.
I want to interject quickly here, uh if you don't mind, I'm so rude. But I want to just say, if you put these signs in this rendering that you're showing, next to the Best Buy sign, that's by, that's, you know, up by the uh Post Road Diner, that is God only knows how high it is, what is it, sixty feet high? You could see it a mile away. These look dwarf next to that sign, and that's what used to be along Connecticut Avenue. And that's the intent, is to get away from that kind of, and tha- that's grandfathered in because we don't actually allow those kind of signs anymore. But that, you know, and there's a knee-jerk reaction against that kind of overkill for signage. And I get that, but I don't think these are, in the context of Connecticut Avenue, I don't think that these are out of scale. I think these are, would be safely visible from both sides of the road with plenty of room for the tenants. And I don't think that these need to be reduced in scale, but that's, I I'm gonna make that, press that argument for public safety, because I think anything smaller and or shorter, someone's gonna just drive right on by and then slam on their brakes, say, oh my God, we missed the Wegmans entrance. And boom, you've got a rear-end collision, because that's what happens when you don't have good wayfinding. So anyway, that's me.
Yeah, it is you, Mike. I I I and I disagree with you. I think they are overkill, they are too large. Uh they don't need to be uh that tall to offer um uh sa- both safety and visibility for uh uh the uh public. I'd I'd like to ask uh Steve, what is the type of uh signage uh that we're looking forward to um with um uh the proposed uh new regulations?
Um, that's a good question, which I don't have.
Yes, I'll, I'll tell you, so just from, so the um the ground signage that they, that the Wegmans folks have proposed at the Richards and Keeler Ave, which are about six feet high, um those are essentially what would be like the new customary ground signs that would be allowed in the uh future uh zoning regulations as proposed. But um but as I I might cut Jay off, but uh well, so what what they're proposing now is essentially what's allowed under the existing regs. The only issue with it um is that technically this, the ground sign that they're proposing would be considered an off-premises sign because it's not on the actual Wegmans property. So that's really the only, that's the impetus for the the text amendment on that sign.
Right.
By the way, Attorney Klein, is there something else you wanted to say or did?
Yep, but I'm happy to see other folks raising hands, so I'm happy to wait my turn, so please, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, a point of clarification on Connecticut Avenue. So both driveways, the way you have it proposed now, there are two driveways and each driveway will have two signs like you proposed on Keeler? No, just one, one at each. That's what I'm in favor of, I wanted to make sure that then I hadn't misspoken before, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
If if I could drive you around a little bit, maybe just show you the Google image of what's out there right now. Um let me see if I can uh grab a
And if I could Fine, but it's just keep in mind, we don't like what what's out there now.
Oh, I totally understand. I'm just trying to give you a perspective of the size of the signs that that we're proposing out here. Here here's the, thi- this is the intersection that we're talking about, and this is the sign that's gonna be replaced. This sign is fourteen feet tall. The sign that we're proposing is fifteen feet. It's about eight inches of difference between what is out here today. And you look at compared to like the Walmart signs and some of the other signs. And and granted, I know you're trying to re-envision this area, but I'm just showing you that any sign that's much smaller than this is going to get totally lost for the scale of this size of project.
I agree, I don't think it will be an issue. If you go down the road, I think the size of the um this sign would be comparable to what is there right now for the Stop and Shop without their their circle at the top.
So if you spin around the other way, this is where the urgent care building is. And if you, if you go down here and turn around, this right here is the other sign. And the sign that we're proposing is actually not that large. We we also, and we uh we also have the tenant buildings here too. We have a uh significant amount of uh development in those tenant buildings that are gonna need some sort of space as well. So I'll I'll stop there, I just wanted to kind of give you a little perspective. But the signs that we're proposing, I think we tried to to give you something that was to scale to the size of the project that we have out here. Thank you.
And just one last staff concern was um that second Connecticut Ave sign. So the 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 obviously the the two, there's the freestanding sign A and B. A is where the you'd actually pull in uh to Wegmans. I'm, and I believe the second sign is actually located at an at an exit only. So that's kind of where we were looking at why, uh you know.
Why do we need a sign?
Yeah, you put one at the entrance.
I- i- in fact, uh if
Unless Jay, I'm shaking, if you're shaking your head, I might be.
Yeah, that's not an exit-only intersection, there's an entrance point there, yeah.
Well, there's a tenants, there were, you want's two tenants and the other one's one tenant. How would you get to the one tenant? How would you get to the difference, the one that's different?
The Mr. Shower Door tenant and the, and the Wells Fargo, right, right, right. Right, I mean, I I think
Yeah, this is a public safety issue. I really think anything smaller, you're gonna drive by and slam Yeah, this is a public safety issue. I really think anything smaller, you're gonna drive by and slam on your brakes. We, I think it would be irresponsible for us to stick to our guns here and say we want smaller signage on Connecticut Avenue, which is six lanes wide.
Yeah, but Mike, they, they can just either go to Keeler or go to Richards if they overshoot the mark, you know, you've got two other possibilities of getting in there. But anyway, I, I agree with the side.
Yeah. Well, you have first time, a lot of first time visitors won't know that.
Uh, Anna, Anna, I see you've joined us. Um, I don't know when you joined us, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to comment, uh, if you have anything to say at this point.
Hi Lou, I joined about ten minutes ago. Um, no, I don't have any comment. I'm here just uh, in case we discuss the rewrite or, I'm, I'm still watching my kids, but I'm here to listen.
And that's, that's, that's fine. And I think we, we will have some time for that.
Great.
I'm sorry, there were others who wanted to speak. Or so I thought.
No, it was basically adding on, on to what Mike was saying that um, there is a need for the signs and especially where Wegmans, the situation where they are, we're going to be attracting a lot of traffic from people that are not local. So to what Tammy was saying, that people can just take the um, the entrance on Killer or um, uh, the, the other street called Costco is, not that many people that are local know that. Uh, so we run into that problem of the collisions or, or that. So I think this signage uh, is something that we should really um, give it a thought the way that it is. Um, I mean, having an, an, a sign on an exit doesn't make sense, but having something that is, that is um, visually available for someone that doesn't know the runs around of, of how the town works, uh, would really be a plus.
Yeah, thank you, Hector. Uh, Darius?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what uh, was in the staff memo, which says staff understands why the text amendment is very specific detailing the minimum lot sizes and the size and usage of buildings as it limits the number of properties eligible to take advantage of the proposed text. However, staff does not believe that uh, tech should be so site specific as what it essentially results in our variances codified into the zoning regulations, so.
I, I, I tend to agree. I don't like uh, uh, a text amendment, and I don't like this text amendment. Um, is, is the reason um, why you haven't gone to ZBA for an exception? Um, can you explain that?
Yes, yes. Um, and you saw my, uh, you might hear the dog too still, I apologize. Um, uh, the reason why we didn't go to the ZBA is that the current regulations just create, uh, the list of variances would be quite long. Uh, I mean, the rules governing how far away the wall signs that everyone seems to like, well, that would be a variance for every single building. Uh, there'd be a variance for uh, the Wegmans signs on Connecticut Avenue. There'd be a variance for the sign on I ninety-five. There'd be a variance for the uh, Mr. Shower Door sign to be replaced just for the tenant. I mean, it, it would be a, it would be a variance from almost every single provision of the regulations and uh, you know, what, what we typically find is that when that's happening, that, you know, a variance is, oh, well, you know, the setback or it's the height and the letter height. But if you're, if you're getting a variance from every other section of the regulation, that's an indication that, hey, it, it, it's not a, a variance is a, a variance isn't the right approach. It's, it's the regulation that's posing a, a, a challenge and maybe needs to be rethought. Um, and you know, the reason why we had it narrowly tailored um, was, you know, we thought this was kind of a uh, a, a low cost opportunity to see how something like this uh, uh, tool would work, right? Uh, test it out at this site, see how this uh, type of scheme works, and then if you like it, uh, or if it proves the safety uh, benefits and the economic benefits that Mr. Mueschak and, and Mr. Patches and, and we would uh, agree with, then you can broaden the scope and apply it to other properties. But we're happy to reword the regulations that it's uh, uh, more broadly applicable. Uh, I, I think there are not many properties that are situated like ours where it's a number of uh, 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 separate lots that have shared access drives and, and shared uh, uh, health and safety improvements. Um, but like I said, I'm, I'm happy to broaden the scope uh, of the text change. The only reason why we didn't do that, this goes back to something you said earlier, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, i- is, you know, uh, Brian and I had conversations and Steve uh, and I and Brian had conversations and you know, we, we also, well, should we rewrite this section? Should we try these words? And, and what the three of us kind of came to was, well, you know what? Before we change anything, let's talk to the people on the, let's talk to the commissioners uh, before we, you know, try another uh, uh, draft of this. So that's why we didn't uh, uh, you know, bring a different text amendment before you tonight. We wanted to get everyone's input here and, and I, for one, I'm glad that we, that we received the input. Uh, you know, I think the challenge is, you know, it, it is aesthetic, you know, we want attractive signs and we think we've achieved that. Um, but safety is critically important, you know, safety and, and, and traffic is critically important. Uh, Wegmans uh, uh, has invested a lot in Norwalk to get access to these curb cuts, is investing a lot in Norwalk uh, uh, to various uh, traffic improvements along the Route One corridor. And the signs that we're proposing are not the pool signs of yesterday. They're, 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 they're just not. I respectfully uh, uh, you know, disagree uh, uh, with, 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 with that uh, uh, premise. Uh, uh, so, you know, I, I think we hear people on, you know, design and aesthetic, uh, but you know, six feet is not enough for a Wegman sign and two tenants at six, seven, seven Connecticut Avenue, six foot tall sign isn't enough. Uh, a six foot tall sign uh, isn't enough for folks who are driving down Connecticut Avenue to know where they're gonna have to make a turn, and we, we, we don't think that. Um, and, and we're prepared to make that case in a public hearing. Uh, we are happy though to continue the dialogue to strike that balance between aesthetic concerns and safety and wayfinding. Uh, w- w- we think we're close to it, to be perfectly honest. We don't think we're too far from the mark. Uh, but we're happy to, to work with your staff and work with all of you to land on the sign package that makes sense, not just aesthetically and architecturally, but for the safety of drivers and folks coming to and from this site. Uh, and for the, quite frankly, the success of the businesses that will be here, which I think we all want to see and just quite frankly, will not will be significantly hindered if we can't get right sized signage here, if we can't get enough signage here. Uh, uh, I, I think that's something we can all agree on.
Uh, the, 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 the third issue, uh, however, um, is um, the change in, in the language that you're asking for, which, and I, I hesitate to use this, but I, I, I view it as the equivalent of spot, it's not. And I say, but it's the equivalent of spot zoning, uh, just, just to serve you. Um, a- and um, so I think you do need to work uh, um, further still with the staff on the language. Um, I, I know, I don't know how other commissioners feel uh, about the language, but uh, I'm, I'm not comfortable with it because of that. I don't see its applicability uh, in any significant way for other businesses other than Wegmans. Um, and, and, you know, I want Wegmans to succeed. Um, we want you here. Uh, so uh, it has nothing to do with that.
No, we know.
It has to do with setting a bad precedent for the rest of, of uh, the city going forward.
Well, I guess that we're, we're happy to work on that language. We're, we're totally fine with that. We welcome that opportunity.
Um, other, other comments?
Uh, Steve? Yeah, I, I have one. Mi- Mike here.
Go ahead, Mike.
I would suggest uh, going out and looking at the Best Buy. I don't even know if they're still in business, but that sign is there that was put up in the nineteen sixties maybe, and it's, it really is huge. And I'm telling you, that's the signage that, like, I always thought that our sign regulations were almost laughable because they restricted uh, you couldn't have a sign that said, enter here apparently because it was added to the square footage. A- and, and I remember that be- being, you know, somebody said, we need to have, show people how to get in and how to get out. And they said, oh no, we can't, you know, and the commission or, you know, staff said, well, this is our regulation. And I remember spending a year talking about the sign regulations about twelve years ago and how restrictive it was. The, the biggest problem people had was the electronic signs that flash, and I agreed with them. You know, it looked like Times Square. And, and I certainly agreed with restricting that. But a basic safety sign that is visible when you're in the middle lane and you're from out of town and it's raining and it's dark and you're looking for Wegmans and you're meeting friends there because they have a cafe, and suddenly you drive past the sign and then you're confused and you're lost and everything else. And I, I, I really do don't think these signs are too big at all. In fact, I think they're, they're properly scaled. Um, the language certainly, I agree with you Lou, that however that needs to be worded, but um, I, the Wegmans is a unique property. It's a landlocked um, property and, and so this, you know, and with, with other tenants that they need to put the signs on. So I don't, I don't have a problem with that, you know, and I'm all, and I don't not like highways lined with signs. I hate billboards. You know, I kind of fall in, in line with most people about, you know, commercialization and all of that. I, I uh, I, I agree with all that, but I don't think these signs are, I think these signs are quite tasteful. I think, thought the two on the Keeler and Richards were overkill, and I think we all have consensus on that. Uh, but I do, I, I'm, I'm just gonna, I just want people to go out and look at the Best Buy sign and see what, what we used to have. And we're, this is, compared to that, this is, this is very small. Uh, and yet still visible from all traffic in both directions, which I'm telling you is very important, because you're gonna have people slamming on their brakes. And the last thing we need is more accidents on Connecticut Avenue. Thank you.
Steve?
Um, I was gonna question for JJ. Did you look at the Costco sign? Do you have any idea what the dimensions on that are versus what you're proposing?
Uh, I do not, but we can look into that.
Okay, yeah, I can pull that as well. Okay.
All right, uh, Steve.
Quick comment, Lou?
Oh, go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you. Uh, the last time um, this commission had uh, anybody before us regarding signs was the Norwalk Hospital. And I think we all remember uh, that most of us, maybe not all of us, wanted the font on those signs to be larger because we were considering people going to the hospital in a rush, um, stressed, you know, and uh, so, you know, I think we could just think about that too. There was something that we wanted larger rather than smaller in this, you know, it might have some relevance here.
Well, but certainly a small in relation to these signs. Um, number one.
Yeah, sort of, knowing, and we wanted them bigger and, and New Vance Health, or the representative was rather reluctant to do that.
But we appear to have scared them away, yeah.
Yes, I think we did.
Steve, um, the, the reason we're seeing this is because it uh, needs to go to public hearing. Um, you should have some further conversations with uh, with Wegmans. Uh, but uh, do you have a uh, a date when you think this can be scheduled?
Um, let me get back to you on that if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Okay, uh, any final comments? All right, if not, then uh, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, next uh, on uh, uh, our agenda twenty twenty-three dash nineteen slash R slash M, Planning and Zoning Commission zoning text amendment for complete rewrite of the zoning regulations and MAP amendment for complete rezoning of the entire city. Continued discussion. Um, Steve, it's only eight oh eight, so I think we can um, find some time to talk about this.
Could I make a request for a five minute break before we do that?
I'll tell you what, let's, let's make it seven, uh, seven minutes. It's eight oh eight. Why don't we get together at eight fifteen?
Thanks.
We're back, we're back in session and um, I'll start by uh, turning things over to uh, Steve.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, do you want to wait just a minute? It looks like we're still missing a couple people.
Um, yeah, that's fine.
So maybe what we can do, uh, cause we have, I guess, forty-five minutes or so, um, talk schedule first to see, you know, get everybody on the same page with that. Uh, we talked at the end of your meeting last week about um, doing special meetings on the two off Wednesdays in September, and I think the general consensus was we would go ahead and do that. Uh, we didn't come to any kind of, we mentioned it previously, didn't come to resolution on uh, the remainder of this month. There's two more Wednesdays in August. Um, I was thinking, and it all depends on what you want to do, um, if maybe not doing anything next week, obviously, which no one's going to object to, I don't think. Um, and then maybe if you uh, would like, we could do a meeting on the thirtieth of August, which is two weeks from tonight. Uh, and, and I think continue with the MAP discussion. There were a few areas that were kind of, we, you know, we, we went over a bunch of different areas. There was a good consensus on a bunch of those, but there were some areas where we had some further questions and a few other areas people wanted to take a second look at or a third look at. So we could go back to those areas and refine that. In addition to that, there were some specific requests for changing the zoning on some properties uh, that you got uh, testimony from during the public hearing process. Staff has a memo we're going to send out tomorrow on those. There's three in this, this round that we're gonna um, focus on, and we can go over those at that, that meeting there. And then I would anticipate, in addition, we'd probably have some other items to go over in terms of some of the technical edits that we're working through right now, making actually some pretty decent progress on a bunch of those, so we can um, touch on them. For tonight, the only other thing that was sent out, which I think I sent out over the weekend, was uh, the documents that were sent out uh, related to the minor edits were, you know, typos, corrections and the, and that ilk as well as some changes proposed for the use table. We reformatted the tables to make them a little more user friendly, hopefully more clear in, in what the issue was and what the staff recommendation was going forward. So, I mean, if you wanted to spend some time going through or answering any questions people had on those, I don't think it's productive to go line by and line with, with those. Probably easier to take questions. I can, you know, pull them up on the screen, but probably easier um, to answer questions somebody has that are specific to any of the items that were brought up.
Steve, thank you so much for reformatting that document. It was much easier to understand.
But, yeah, I went back and I think on my bad, I think I tried to rush it before I went on vacation for the last one, so I think this one, it took a little more time and cleaned it up a little bit.
I'll be honest, I haven't digested it much, so I don't have any questions at this point.
And some of those might be able to be answered offline if, if questions do come up. Um, there were a few items on
Yeah.
the use table that we were left kind of open ended, which I think we would need your input on. Um, I can pull that up and maybe we could, we could talk.
I did have some questions on the use table. Um,
Okay.
if we can look at that and if you can pull it up, because I'm not at my computer.
Yeah, let me blow it up. She's probably not gonna be able to read that. Okay, so here's the top. So there were, like, as I mentioned, there were some, is that a scale? Okay, or need me to blow it up some more?
I can't speak for anybody else, but I can read it. So my guess is most people can, if not all, people can read it.
Steve, this is the document that you sent out on Sunday, right?
Correct, yeah, there were two, two spreadsheets. This is the, one of those.
Yep. Um, is it the seven sixteen one or the eight four one?
Seven sixteen.
Thank you.
What I was thinking too, um, probably going forward, you know, doesn't have to happen right away, can happen you know, a few weeks down the road or a month down the road, is combining everything into a single spreadsheet uh, um, of just the edits that have come into question and then the, you know, some, you know, something we get to a point where the commission's in agreement on those specific ones. That way the, the public can see the, the, the what the changes are going to be to the document itself. Now, they can be in, you know, page order and, you know, which would be by section order as well.
Yeah. Um, do you want us to shout out questions? Are you gonna read out each line and if there's to ask if there's questions on that thing or what, how's this work?
Um. Maybe by. I can start with the one. I can do, wh- wh- however you'd like to proceed. It's fine with me. Yeah, so on page two twenty-two, um, again, this is article four with the use table. There were. For use, uh, excuse me, five different uses that had a question or a change proposed and um. Staff provided comments on those. I don't know if anybody has questions on any of those.
Are you still thinking there might be um, reinstituting zone B? So that's sort of indicated.
Yeah, that'll have to happen. I think that. Yeah, that, and then I think once. My plan for that, not going too off topic, was once we got, you know. Hopeful consensus on the, the map changes itself, then. Brian and I will go back and then look at the areas that are proposed for C D three and separate out the two zones to. Line it up. Kind of consistent with where the B zone is today. For the most part, there might be some changes that arise just based on looking at the map, but I think that will. Uh, take care of that overarching concern.
So the places that were proposed to go to C D three. And now are proposed to stay in three D. Uh, three S. Would actually go to. Some new thing that's equivalent to B. Is that the idea?
Right, we, we need to have a new zone that would more than likely be equivalent to what the B zone is today. There's probably, like I said, there'll be some tweaks here and there, um, but by and large, it'll be, it'll mimic that.
Okay, but they wouldn't go to three S anymore. People, people say that are living on. Uh, Myrtle. That thought they were going to three, that as of last week's. Uh, revision or the July twenty-seventh revision, it says three S. Would actually go to three X, let's call it. Do I have that right?
Uh, in theory, yes, I, I can't.
Okay.
In any individual street because there might be a few streets that make sense, but by and large, you're correct.
Okay, great. Um, so then that was my only question about this group because it mentioned. That, just making sure I understood that.
But Steve. Can you please clarify what the P is? Change P into C V and it's in a lot of these, it goes further down. What is P?
Oh, uh. Do you have a specific one, Tammy? I, cause I think I know what you're talking about.
You're just using the letter P. What does it mean? Permitted?
Permit.
Permitted, okay, thank you.
So, so yeah, permitted, P is permitted, N P not permitted. Um, S P. Is a site plan or permitted with limitations and then S P U is special permit.
Sorry, what was S P again?
So, yeah, or is it P L? I'm like, yeah, P L's permitted.
Yeah, 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 P L's permitted and then there's S P U, which is the special permit.
Right.
So is there any way you can make that key a visible? Or is it only like on the side where we can't see?
Oh.
Do you have, do you have the key, the, the, the map key? Where like all the definitions, is that like? Over where we can't see on this um. Presentation?
Yeah, is it in the spreadsheet, the key?
Yeah.
That would be helpful to have it front and center or on a separate piece of paper so we can refer to it.
Sure, so for the key, would you, are you talking about just the P and the, or do you want the zoning designations as well?
Well, you know what, if you, if it's easy for you to cut and paste them all again, I mean, we're all pretty getting comfortable with. The letters and the. You know, but. It's helpful. You, you guys deal with this every day, twenty-four hours a day, and we're dealing with this as, you know, when we can as best we can. And if we want to be talking the same language, I think it's helpful to not just constantly be dealing with letters.
Sure, so just, just to, to clarify, is it just the, the P and the, the, whether it's permitted or not permitted or the zoning designations as well?
I think the designations too.
Okay.
I mean, I could obviously remember P means permitted, but there are a lot of other. Abbreviations in this.
Yeah, there's a lot, there, there's, there's alphabet soup. And we just want a clear way to, to connect the dots.
Gotcha, okay, yeah, we can add a key, um, figure out a way to put it into the spreadsheet. That's easier, no?
Either that, Steve, or send us hard copies that we can print out. Um, with uh, the alphabet soup.
You can, uh, Steve, you can just add right click and, and insert add comment. And that can hide itself.
Yeah, cause I, 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 it's probably on, in the presentation, you probably do have it. On the far.
It's in the regulations.
But, but we just can't see it, that's all.
Okay, I'll, I'll put something together and I'll send it out. If it doesn't work, then you'll tell me and I'll change it.
Okay.
Like a, a one-page cheat sheet. So when we're doing this, that way we could print the cheat sheet. And, cause it's hard when you're just looking at these spreadsheets on a computer, you can't.
Yeah.
Toggling all the time.
That I, that's pretty easy to do that. We can do that really quickly. That's no problem.
Right. Let's um, let's move down this spreadsheet.
Sure, so line thirteen. Um. Had a highlighted one, um, and I'm not sure the origin of this comment, but it pertained to medical office use. Um, and there was a recommendation to allow medical office use in the civic zone. Um. I don't have a strong opinion on that one way or the other. I suppose, um. There could be a medical need within the civic zone that was appropriate, uh, maybe it's a city-related function, maybe not.
So you could argue, you could argue that uh, some parts of the health department. Uh, are uh, medical office.
Yeah, and that's a good point. And then also like, say, if the city has a, a building and they want to convert it into some sort of clinic or something, they could call it a medical office.
Hmm.
Hmm. Just gives them the flexibility.
Yeah, I personally have no problem with that.
With the um, testing sites during COVID, was that an issue at all with needing to have those like temporary medical offices set up in civic zones? Like in Veterans Park or elsewhere?
No, not, not because that's like a health emergency, so that's kind of an ex. That overrides a zoning commission.
Good.
I don't have a problem with this off the top of my head, but I think it will be helpful that. Not just for this one, but to understand like where their request was coming from or what the rationale was, or if there's a downside to it in general.
Some of these, we, we're not gonna be able to go back, be, just because when the, we pulled the, um. A lot of these came from the online submission form and so there was no, that was what the comment was and there wasn't like, uh. Ja- Jane Doe had recommended this or something like that.
There wasn't a rationale or anything.
But, okay, maybe this is coming from, um. Down on the Wall Street area, there was a developer who wanted to have, I believe, a dental office on. Uh, Wall Street or West Avenue, right at the intersection there near the library. And that might be where this is coming from and. Prior, in prior years. The. Planning and zoning did not allow a medical. Office or establishment on the ground floor. Is that, is that sort of right, Steve?
It, it's possible that would probably pertain more to, um. Commercial properties than anything else. Uh, the only other thing I would mention that's probably pretty relevant to this is if, if it is a city property or municipal property. It's going to need a additional layers of approval as well. So. If they're gonna propose to use city property for something, they're probably gonna need common council approval as well. So it wouldn't just be. Planning and zoning weighing in if, if you felt something wasn't quite up to snuff or something like that.
Right, so this request, though, this is only in the C V zone. So ostensibly a school or some public building like the library would. You know, have some medical facility in it, I'm just.
And again, schools have health centers.
Right. Okay.
Could this be S P U since it seems like it's a, um. Atypical use case, you know, should it be a special permit?
Certainly could, if that's what you wanted to do.
That's the recommendation I'd put forward, un- unless there's reason to not include it at all.
And to be clear. I read a comment that uh, C V, let's say Veterans Park is C V, right?
Right.
And somebody said, oh, look what you could put in C V, uh, by perm, you know, uh, as of right. They're gonna put all this in Veterans Park and I'm like. That's not what that means, right? Be it. You're not gonna be able to put. These as of right uses in C V in any current park.
Is that true?
Is that true? So any, so without pulling up the use table, so any use that's allowed. Within the civic zone is a, a use that can go there. Doesn't mean they can get approval to go there because as I mentioned too, it's. You know, it's, it's, it's. For that example, it's a public park, so you have the Wrexham Park Commission that's going to weigh in. You have Common Council that's going to weigh in. Um. The zoning regulations just list the uses that are potentially permissible on that space. Couldn't we just say except in pub, current public parks?
Would that make it P L then for many of this civic uses that want to show up in public parks? And that would just be the, the L part rate, the limitation on that?
In this, yeah, then Mike, uh, we'll go ahead, Steve.
Or I say, or you could just make it special permit use and then if you ever got, if someone ever came in with a. Medical clinic application in the park, you could say, no, it's not appropriate. Well, I can't. I just can't imagine anybody. Proposing anything in a public park.
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be like, it would come from the city side, like any app, like this would, like, like nobody from, like, the private sector could come in. Like, I want to build something on city property. This would be like a city initiated, you know, project, whatever it ends up being.
Well, I think, yeah.
I think special permit makes sense.
Yeah. S P.
Cause it also. Like the others that, that Mike was bringing up. All the other uses like amphitheaters. In the parks and stuff like that. It would get proposed by the city. And it would go through a special permit process as to whether there was an impact on that neighborhood and. All the rest of it, right?
Yes.
I think it may be worth. Oh, go ahead, Tammy.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's, and I'm just looking up the definitions in our, um. Manual, there is no definition for civic zone. There's civic building, civic district. Excuse me, and civic space and civic uses, but no civic zone.
A civic district is the civic zone.
District, okay.
I was gonna suggest maybe.
In a lan- in a language, why don't we make that clear?
It's in, in page three oh two in my book.
Oh, I was looking page four thirty-nine and it doesn't. Use the letters. C V, it just says civic district, but it doesn't reference C V zone. What page are you, Darius?
Um, I'm on page uh, three oh two, so it's article five, development parcel standards, uh, sip. I'm section five, uh, point.
Oh yeah, I see it, thank you.
I think the civic zone is. New and different enough, maybe we'd have it as a separate topic for another conversation. I think that there's a lot of nuances to it, uh, I think people may have questions on, so I know we have a list of things we want to have conversations on. But the notion of the civic zone may be one of them.
I like that.
I think for now, could we make a note? Here that. At least some of us are leaning towards the medical office. Thing as a special permit. And then like TBD civic zone broader discussion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I have another list that I'm working off of. Topics.
Okay.
Issues. So I'll leave the, the. Commission change to S P U for now and, and, you know, we can revisit anything at any point in time.
Now, Steve, just above that, uh, lodge is, is being uh, removed. Hadn't we agreed uh, to remove bed and breakfast as well? As, uh. Uh, a use. Within the city.
I'm glad you flagged that one.
Yeah.
I, I know it was brought up several times, um, I mean, whatever, if you want to remove it or. That's the two options that staff came up with, either remove it or.
I would say remove special permit use.
Why wouldn't we want to have bed and breakfasts allowed somewhere?
I've heard, I've heard a lot of complaints. Um, in some neighborhoods of uh, the city. Where people um, are leasing out their houses, uh, uh, as bed and breakfast. And um, it doesn't go over well at all with.
I, I. I've heard that too. So like I was one, I've heard that too. I, I feel like there's two separate things. There's the bed and breakfast rule. And then there's Airbnb, which. Doesn't fall under bed and breakfast. I, I think, or I guess that's a question. And then my, my then question would be, I understand that bed and breakfast may. Be currently pro- causing problems in certain neighborhoods or people may be fearful that they might cause problems. But I'm not sure if the answer to that is we don't have bed and breakfasts in Norwalk, cause that seems like. A nice thing that a lot of cities have. Maybe there's a way to put limitations. On it or restrict it to certain areas. Where it would work.
I agree.
Nice, like it generates tourism to have like a nice B and B. In the right part of town, done well.
Yeah, I like the special permit, uh. As well for that, that designation instead of uh, flat out, uh. Disallowing it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think a, a bed and breakfast should ever be as of right. But it certainly should be allowed by special permit.
Is it currently as of right? In all residential areas in the current regs?
I don't believe so, but I'd have to check.
Yeah, quick, quick, I'll get back.
Yeah, just to, uh, Anna, to answer your other question, that Airbnb and, and bed and breakfast are two completely different uses. Um, cause the, the, obviously the bed and breakfast is a establishment where you can rent an individual room. Um, and then there are meals provided where in Airbnb is you're renting the residents. Um, and occupying it for a length of stay. It's not shared with. Six families or something like that. That kind of would be a little bit of the distinction.
And Airbnbs are not at all regulated, right?
Correct, the, the only time we deal with them is when someone is using them for non-residential purposes. Um, we've had examples where people have rented out their house. For like, um, family reunions or commercial purposes, like I've seen in the past, film shoots or something like that, which is just crazy stuff. And I can see where that being an issue, but if they just rent it out for. Um, you know, it's a single family house and they rent it out to a family that meets our definition, then. It's consistent with what somebody else could do in the regulations.
And bread and, bed and breakfasts are not currently allowed, uh, in the zoning regulations.
Oh, interesting. Hmm. So all those bed and breakfasts that people are complaining about are. Not allowed in the first place.
Unless they're thinking of Airbnbs and just confusing the two, it's possible.
I think so. I think it's more of a confusion of the two.
And I always think of a B and B as owner occupied. Yeah. You know, I always think of somebody who. Uh, you know, let's say a scenario where someone is aging. Like I am. I don't know about anybody else, but you know. When I'm retired. I may want to rent some rooms out and ha- and make people breakfast.
But like, act, so Airbnb, plenty of Airbnbs. Our owner occupied and they're just renting. A room in their. House as well. It seems like the distinction is. Making breakfast. And, and.
Ambiguous.
Well, I, I.
I don't know, do you know any Airbnb where the owner's actually there when you're there? I thought the whole.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
I've, I've stayed in a gazillion of them.
And, and the, the, the difference is, is that the Airbnb is an established. You know, um, entity where they are actually paying their share of taxes. The, I mean, I mean, the, the, the bed and breakfast, the Airbnb. You know, the homeowner is getting away with taking an extra revenue, but not really reporting it. So it's like a private versus public kind of situation. And that's why residents don't really like it, cause it's not really regulated.
Yeah. It's not a real business.
What some people are making in a business, that's the thing, yeah.
So currently, in our current regulations. BnBs are not allowed. Airbnbs are not. Spoken to. People are doing things. That are. You know. Annoying. And. Theoretically, at least some people on the commission would like there to be the possibility of a real B and B. In a way that's not annoying and then separately. Is there something that we should be saying or doing about? Airbnbs, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the Airbnb one's a separate, yeah, again, a separate discussion, I think, but. And our, my mind is there's nothing to prevent, um, somebody from buying a piece of property, building a house and just renting the house out. So it's a question of, is somebody staying there for a week or two weeks or are they renting it for? So it's a question of is somebody staying there for a week or two weeks, or are they renting it for a year, six months or or. A scenario where you have a job that calls you overseas for a period of two years and you have to rent out your house or something, so it doesn't. Sit dormant.
But but typically an Airbnb um is for short stays.
Correct.
Not for long stays.
Right.
You know, someone's going on vacation, they want to rent a house for a week or two weeks.
It might be helpful to get best practice language on that and see what other cities have done, you know, is there a six week? Minimum or a six month minimum.
I think that's.
Just regular leases.
For lots of towns and figuring that issue out. I don't think.
Yeah, yeah, it's obviously on a lot of people's mind right now.
Also, would we have to collaborate, I guess, with the ordinance committee of the council on this?
Maybe. But yeah, the the B and B one, no, but Airbnb potentially. I mean.
There's the whole enforcement side of things, like this.
Like we get scattered complaints every once in a while. I mean, the one good thing is, I mean, when we brought. We brought a couple of the issues to Airbnb directly and that matter has been corrected pretty quickly. Well, like you can't. You can't rent out this building for this purpose, or you need to correct the listing or something like that. And they've been pretty responsive on those kind of things.
In terms of best practice language from somewhere else, maybe that's something that would be helpful for B and Bs. If we want to allow them with special. Permits or certain requirements or whatever.
Yeah, that's that's pretty simple.
Breakfast needs to be more than a muffin.
Right. Well, wouldn't a bed and breakfast kind of fall under hotel? I even though it's a very small hotel or an inn, and do we have any definitions about those in our city regulations?
Yeah, I think those are defined and I think they have related to capacity.
Oh, also, the last Airbnb I stayed at, they left, they gave us muffins, orange juice, milk and coffee. So blurred the lines even more.
To uh maybe next point earlier, I I think that there is some additional like clarifications on these, and I think this might be a good topic for us to come back to in more depth similar to the C V zone. Yeah, it seems like there's a good amount to talk about here. Uh, some things we need to clarify and get the the best language on. I I don't know if anyone else agrees on that, but.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, let's move down.
It's about protecting, you know, current residents.
Right.
And that's that's why it's important.
Current residents who are wanting to operate these establishments.
Exactly, yeah. And well, and their neighbors, yeah.
Um, the one. There's two on here in this section. Related to um. I've highlighted both of them there that we were. Unless there's obviously any other questions you guys have on any of the other changes, but um. Two highlighted on there for additional input from the commission on that we were a little unsure about.
Well, I'll get, you know, maybe we ought to defer the artist studio because it's in the C V.
Yeah, so that one I could speak to. Uh, I had emails from, I believe her name is um. Kimberly Henrickson, and she runs the Center for Contemporary Printmaking, which I think runs out of.
Matthews Park.
Matthews Park. So her concern was um under the new regs, uh artist studio or workspace wasn't. Permitted in the civic zone, which is what uh Matthews Park would be. Um, and so she was worried about continuing to operate her 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 business there. So that was one thing that we flagged to to change so that she would. She wouldn't have to worry about that, you know, potentially becoming nonconforming and no one permitted. So that was that issue.
Yeah, I'm in I'm in support of that. Um, and if not permitted as a special purpose, or sorry, a special permit, uh.
Yeah, it's unusual, but they have an artist in residence cottage. In the back, that's um. An integral part of their program. Uh, they bring in some big names. From around the world uh who live there, you know, for a period of time. And run workshops and print. I I mean, that whole thing is just so amazing.
And and again, since it's a it's a city property, so. Again, there's additional approvals and layers that are required, not just the planning and zoning.
Steve, I think the question of, you know, allowing like little. Commercial enterprises in neighborhoods is really, is that what allows CD three S three L and CD dash three? Is that what that's asking?
Right, there was the idea of could you permit? Corner stores or something like that, could that could you integrate that into the single family zones was basically the question.
Similar to overseas, like cranberry. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, um after you, Chapin.
That that's all I was gonna say. Go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, okay, I um recently. Um, I I like the little kind of corner store idea if we are trying to promote sustainability, walkability and all of that. Anna was saying last time, now she can walk to get a bagel at Upper Crust. Uh, the little pizza deli restaurant establishment on um Sunset Hill. You know, those are nice little neighborhood businesses. I don't know if those are grandfathered in. But it it is an opportunity to not use your car if we're trying to promote such things. And so I would. I think they add character to neighborhoods, but if a single family house was turned into one, you know, I would imagine the neighbors would all object, even though. They might serve a purpose.
If I can add um a little bit on top of that, um in addition to the Cranberry Market as a model, I think just down the road from at the intersection of Newtown Ave. And Patrick Ave, um there's a country convenience.
Oh, yeah, you you used to be Anastasia's, yes.
Yep. Uh, I think that's a good model as well. You know, it's a two family would look like, sorry, two floor, what looks like a uh former residence. With the ground floor being activated as a a small corner store.
Right, there's another rest uh uh restaurant deli just up from City Hall.
Yeah, that's the one I was referring.
Was gonna bring it was gonna bring it up. I actually just rode my bike this Saturday and like you said, it adds character to the um to the neighborhood.
Mm hmm. And in Silvermine, that's, you know, the original Silvermine Tavern. They have the little market. I know the little muffin place around the corner, I believe, is in New Kane and not Norwalk.
That's right.
That creates a nice little walking environment um for the people that live there.
Right, but across from the tavern, they do they do have a small market.
Mm hmm, yeah.
I think this is a great. Like this would be a great use of the public hearing for the special. Permit, because I think it really depends on. You know, how neighbors feel about things and whether there's. Parking issues or or whatever. I heard a complaint about. Somebody running literally a corner store. Out of their basement, like in the middle of a residential street, like getting deliveries of like sodas and like all sorts of stuff. The neighbors being upset. Um. There's a market for it. And I think it's lovely, but people should be able to weigh in on that.
Yeah, I just want to be careful that the uh special permit process doesn't just become a de facto veto process. Um, which it can be in many cases.
Also, you know, we could look at parameters around uh distance and, you know. Uh, parking, uh lot size, so we can definitely. Get further into this conversation around how we would want it to look and. How far away we would want it to be from another one, so.
But I think it's great.
Okay, agreed. Let's let's move down.
On uh line forty forty one um for motor vehicle sales, rental and leasing, uh does that uh the specifically on forty one? Yeah, does that make um? Uh, a number of existing items or existing uh properties and businesses nonconforming? I don't have it in front of me, but I think this was my question, and I think that was my concern at the time.
Wow.
Trying to find.
Um, yeah, that's a good question. We'd have to go back and look.
Okay.
Uh, the NB zone properties and see what's applicable or not applicable.
Yeah, like the one that comes to the top of your mind, probably like Van Zant Street, where there's quite a few of them. Probably a lot of those would become nonconforming that way.
Okay. Yeah, that I think that was my concern with this question. I think this one was mine, but. Yeah.
Yeah, that particular use is one of the trickier ones with the combination of the zones that kind of. Throws a little bit of a monkey wrench, but I think, you know. Again, that's something with a special permit, you could put some pretty tight standards around, so it could only kind of be in. Very specific areas.
Uh, Steve, I'm looking at two thirty two. I mean, didn't we just approve a drive through uh at a cannabis dispensary?
Yes, um. Correct. So that the question of a question popped up, um should we not allow drive-throughs? And I don't think it was really related to the. Cannabis dispensary, but more so related to the. Chick-fil-A scare. So I think that that's probably where it stems from.
And I think one thing definitely is, I think right now they're permitted in more a few zones. Um. I think that four C could make sense. That's like your Route One main app corridor, but like any other places, I I wouldn't think that they would make a lot of sense.
Yeah, because if you remember, we pulled them out of the east uh East Norwalk Village District. There's not permitted anymore.
That's right.
I think that's the my guess is that's the thoughtfulness of of where drive-throughs ought to be. Uh, and avoiding, you know, some just obviously bad situations.
Yeah, I mean, in terms in terms of walkability, I don't think the drive-through is the needed thing, but I think allowing it on the in the. CD four C makes sense because it's it's, you know, as long as we allow, and by doing it through special permit, you can. Really focus in on the uh road network, you can focus in on the queuing, uh making sure you have enough car storage, all those kind of things.
On the item above on line fifty one, unless we had anything else on drive-throughs, sorry. Um. Does staff any have any uh thoughts on limiting the like square footage or footprint of a warehouse in the light industrial zone?
Uh, I I it doesn't raise any alarms with me, just based on the the changes in the definition from warehouse to. I mean, di- distribution, yes, that that in storage, yes, I think those are red flags where warehouse to me wasn't as much, but. Again, if you had some thoughts, you know. I I don't, it's not a sword I was gonna die on one way or the other.
I'll I'll see if I come up with more thoughts.
How is it then on Wilson Avenue down by the ice rink and the beer garden, that big building? It was built with no particular use and then it just turned into a storage facility one day. How did that happen?
Because the the regulations weren't changed quick enough to prevent that. Um, yeah, that one really made me mad. And which is one of the reasons I really pushed to get storage limited to where it could go.
Right.
Yeah, I'm I would be against. I would be in favor of limiting where they can go as well.
And and we still have a moratorium on uh the storage units, correct?
No, we actually. It when the industrial zones changes occur, we really limited to where they could go. They can only go in four C in the new regs, but under very specific circumstances has to be. Kind of like the the Willard Road scenario that was built a couple of years ago. Basically, it's got to be set back from the road on a very large parcel, tho- those kind of things.
I think.
Yeah, it was unfortunate. We actually, there was a. Pretty good commercial tenant that was looking for a space and that space would have worked, but the deal with the self-storage guy. Had gone through prior to that popping up, so that would have been a just kind of a missed opportunity.
I think slightly related to this, uh but maybe before we jump into accessory uses, um I think this came up at the public hearing, but something I was also curious about is. Uh indoor agriculture, I might be lacking the correct uh definition, but like the greenhouses or like vertical farming and such. It's not explicitly in our use table and I would imagine it would be i- if so, in our um. Permanent uses, uh not not in our accessory or temporary uses. Um, but uh wanted to propose like looking at that for either um our light industrial or heavy industrial zones. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that.
I mean, something like hydroponic um farming.
Yep.
I think we can double check the definition of manufacturing, but that has always been traditionally how we've looked at it. And have permitted it the same way.
Would that use include cannabis growing or is that a separate regulated thing?
Separate, yeah.
We had that up above.
And you know, I think that that was also brought up around sometime around the Norton Park uh situation, you know. Uh, how could that site be used? And some people thought hydroponics and. And things like that could be a good use of the land.
Yeah, I I think it's covered on the definition of manufacturing, but we'll go back and read those again.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, tip in a way that was thought through with the industrial zone study and the rewrite a a year or two ago. To enable that sort of exact sort of use case. Excellent. ADUs. Can maybe we talk about that as another standalone session is not much here, but I think there's worth. Considering if there's any changes we want to make to that, any tweaks, it's, you know, the rule's been out for a year. We've only gotten. What, two or three detached? So I don't know if it's really having the effect that people have said it should or could. But I think it'd be worth to um um. Revisit that.
Or that they were worried it would.
Yeah.
I think at your.
There were a bunch of ideas that came up on the public hearing about how to change that too.
Yeah, I think your next meeting, you'll have your first. Actual new construction for a detached ADU rather than just a ex- existing structure.
Structure converted, cool.
What's a cannabis hybrid retailer?
Uh, that's what you uh that's like a hybrid retailer would be medical and recreational. Someone had made a request to increase the hours. Um. Uh, staff would say, why not just make it consistent with what you can do for alcohol? There's not really. Much of a difference between the two in our opinion.
Is that proposed like the the hybrid retailer? Is is that a proposal to to combine the two?
No, no, no. So that's the the state definitions regarding cannabis have um. Uh, a cannabis retailer definition and a cannabis hybrid retailer definition. So the hybrid retailer would be. If you had opened up a medical marijuana facility or med- medical marijuana um. I guess store is not the right word, but uh. Business and then the cit- the state changed the regulations to allow uh recreational cannabis sales. Then you, if you had one of those facilities, you had the ability to change your license to a hybrid retailer. So you were doing both the medical marijuana sales and the uh the. I'm going to say over the counter cannabis sales.
All right, um I'm going to interrupt you to say it's nine o'clock. And um. What is it uh that uh uh commission would like to do at this point? You want to continue this process? Um, or do you? Want to end this and uh mo- move forward to complete the meeting?
I'd say let's put a line in it.
We have to approve the minutes.
How close are we to being done with this?
That's your call. And then there's a lot of lines.
People have highlighted things, but there's a lot of non highlighted things.
Yeah.
And you start to get to parking, like I I would put a line in it for now.
All right, I'm gonna put a nice big highlight in the middle of this.
Okay. Okay, uh we'll be coming back to this over and over again, um until we. Until we have the language we're all comfortable with. Um, then let's move on. Um, as Darius said, with approval of. Um, then let's move on, um, as Darius said, with approval of the minutes. Last meeting, uh, August second, can I have a motion to approve?
Um, I just, I just have a comment. Um, I didn't read it through and um, and I just, I just want to add one word to it with the um, the new Norwalk School being a flagship school that the other schools can follow as a model. Because that part was left out and I, it's very important to make that distinction.
Does anyone have any objection to the uh, addition of that? Okay, so uh, Chapin, I think I saw your hand up.
Yes, I'll, I'll move with.
Did I see your hand up for a second? Yeah, sorry, Darius, you're muted.
I'll, I missed the last meeting, so I will have to abstain.
Okay, can I have another uh, person second uh, the minutes? Okay. Tammy has uh, seconded, just a show of hands, uh, all those in favor? And uh, we have one abstention. Uh, Anna, what did you do? Oh, Anna is, Anna, it was. Okay, all in favor with one abstention. Um, comments of director, Steve? Did you get an answer to your question on getting together on August thirtieth?
That was gonna be my comment.
Okay. Uh, feeling of uh, the commissioners about getting together on the thirtieth?
If we do the like six to eight, that works. Yep.
Yeah, I figure we could do the map changes, whatever's residual, and then get back into the table if there's time.
Okay.
I'd be fine with that. I'm also open to going later if others want to.
I am as well.
Okay, good.
I'm good.
I.
I'm good.
Okay, good. Uh, all right, then we'll, we'll, uh, we'll schedule a meeting for the thirtieth. Uh, anything else, Steve?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, uh, comments of uh, commissioners? Anyone um, wish to make a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Steve, um, any updates on getting Jim Travis and talk to us about the residential parking permit?
You did Steve.
Um, yeah, I, we, I talked to Jim about that a little bit and Jessica, we're gonna talk further in the next week or two. There's a lot of balls in the air with that, so it's not just um, TMP. So yeah, we will continue the conversation and I'll get back to you with an update.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Darius moved to adjourn. I saw Hector's hand and JJ's hand go up. People are obviously anxious uh, to adjourn. Uh, so we have a motion to adjourn all those in favor.
Hi.
Okay, thank you all.
Bye, everybody. Have a good vacation.
Bye.